Okay, we're live. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the Monday, October 19th, 6:25 Public Hearing Order. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker, March 10th, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, 3820, The City Quincy Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel QATV 9, Government Access. This is the 6:25 Public Hearing for Council Order 2020-139, Utility Grant of Location, National Grid, Gas, 172 South Street. At this point, I would like anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise hand feature. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. And no written correspondences. Okay, so anybody? Is there anybody for or against? Do we see anybody? Who's in control? Nobody? Okay. Going once, going twice, sold. So, that being said, no written, no written correspondences have been, as of now, have been received by the Clerk of Committees for this item. Seeing not further public comment, I will close this public hearing. And it is 6:27. I still, I think, hold the record. Thank you. And we'll be back in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I would like to call the meeting of October 19th, the 6:30 Public Hearing Meeting to Order. In accordance with the Monday, with accordance with the Governor Charles D. Baker, March 10th, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Ledger 30A and 20, The Quincy City Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel QATV 9, Government Access. pursuant to the open meeting law, any persons may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit any meeting through this, any meeting intended, therefore, should be advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. This is a public hearing for council orders pending in the Ordinance Committee Relative to Regulation and Taxations of Short-Term Residential Rentals, 2020-125, Ordinance Amending Municipal Code, Chapter 196, Licenses and Permits, Adding to Article 2, Business Licenses and Fees, Section 196-14, Regulations of Short-Term Residential Rentals, 2020-126, Order Accepting the Local Excise Tax Provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Room Occupancy Excise, 2020-127, Order in Accepting the Community Impact Fee Provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Room Occupancy Excise, Professionally Managed Units, 2020-128, Order Accepting the Community Impact Fee Provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Room Occupancy Excise, Two-Family and Three-Family Dwellings. At this point, I'd like to ask anybody who would like to speak in favor or opposition to these to raise their hand in the hand feature, which will be on the bottom right-hand side of your computer. And if you have called in, when you do, when you do raise your hand, if you could state your name and address. The other option is if you're dialing in, to do *9. I have one person raised their hand. So, let's see if I can get it. John?
Hello?
There you go. You have the floor, John.
I just wanted to say that I'm in full support of this John Rutherford.
John, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
John Rutherford, 62 Grumwell Road, Quincy, Mass. I'm in full support of this. We need tax revenue. So, this is basically anybody who is renting Airbnb, anyone making rental income from their property short-term. The city now will get a piece of that, just like we get a piece of all the hotel money. I think this is a good bill. I think it's a very long bill. I didn't have the patience to read all of it. But I'm in favor of it, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor or opposition? I'm not seeing anybody. We do have three written letters that were received. And I think Clerk has those, and they've been submitted to everybody for the record. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close this public hearing this time. Thank you. We actually have one minute. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 19th, 6:35 Meeting of the City Quincy Ordinance Committee to Order. The matter before us this evening is the orders that we just reviewed. I'm not going to read them again because we just went through them in the public hearing. The discussion from the bottom. We are gonna, I gotta transfer, this is, this is in regards to the Airbnb. And after speaking with Counselor Phelan, because he was the one who, who introduced this to the ordinance committee, I'd like to turn the floor up to him before we have, we have this, Mr., just, I just brought this over. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just pass this over to Chuck.
Can I just call a quick roll?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Crowell.
Present.
Counselor Debona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang. Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan. Chairman Mahoney.
Present.
Nine members.
I was present, I was muted, sorry. Palmucci.
So, at this point, before Mr. Durkin actually takes the floor, I'd like to, I'd like to pass this over to Chuck Phelan at this time, just to, for the essence that he brought this ordinance before us, just so he can give kind of an outline of his ordinance that he was asking us to review. Chuck?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The ordinance came out originally when I was walking around campaigning back over a year ago. It was a year ago this time when we were out on the campaign trail. I began to see a lot of houses that we would knock on them, and there was nobody there. And it was kind of secrecy. And these were all in Resident A areas. So, there's a lot of, so as I began to research it, I began to find out, I would call the building inspector, he would send somebody down. I began to find out a lot of these were Airbnbs. And at that time, I put in a resolve, and I sent it to the law office, asking for an ordinance, and then asking for other people to join on when we were. One of, one of the things, I, there were two reasons I brought it in. Number one, I think we must protect the integrity of Resident A. I think if we have strong neighborhoods in the city, if we want to keep them strong, we've got to, we've got to segregate those and make sure those, I segregate them. That was a bad word. But make sure people, families are moving in and able to take part in the neighborhood. I think if you look around the city, some of our strongest, some of our strongest neighborhoods are the ones that are Resident A, and they're the ones we want to protect. So, I brought this ordinance in. I'm not against the Airbnbs. I've stayed near Airbnbs. I realize in certain places, they're, they're actually not a bad thing. But two things I found, one, in Resident A neighborhoods, families coming in were being outbid on single-family homes, and family, two families, or whatever, were being outbid because people were buying them based on they were going to make a business out of it, which is not why we have, not why we have Resident A homes. And that's one reason. The other reason is this takes a lot of stock that would be available. The more housing stock you have, the cheaper the prices supposedly is the thing. And we're in a housing crisis right now. We're, even now, they're saying we're still down about 25%. So, people are looking for more housing and stuff like that. And then you're tying up units that would normally be, be available for people to live in, families to live in, professionals to live in, whoever. And those are being tied up with temporary, you know, not just the Airbnbs. Some of them are used for illegal boarding houses and homing houses. Jay gets usually a weekly call from me on one of those, one of those things happening. So, I brought the ordinance in. Several cities and towns around have done the same thing. City of Boston did the same thing. And that's when I'm kind of looking for this. Not to say you can't do it, but find out a way to control it and a way to protect the Resident A neighborhoods in our city. Our single-family neighborhoods, or two, some of them are single, two families, and protect those and keep those, those, that stock for anyone who wants to come in and raise a family, be part of the neighborhood. And that's the reason I brought this ordinance in. There's an ordinance, and there's also some provisions. And because they have to be brought in separately, then one is for paying the hotel motel tax. The other is for community impact fees. So, there's a, there's a couple, there's the main ordinance, which sets forth the fees, how we collect them and everything like that. And then there are three different ordinances, and those are where they want to put the impact fees on, or anything. I give this out to my colleagues. I realize this is our first pass at it. I'm sure there might be some changes and amendments. And I welcome the discussion on this. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Phelan. And at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Durkin if he would like to, I know that you've worked on this, if he would like to maybe give us an overview of this, and I can open up to the floor for any questions.
He's muted.
Steve, you're muted. You can unmute yourself. Perfect.
Amy?
Yep. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you, Counselor Mahoney. So, I was asked to come up with what would commonly, commonly be referred to as an Airbnb ordinance. And really, it's, it's an ordinance that regulates short-term rentals, residential rentals. I was, I was able to take a look at some other communities who took a stab at trying to regulate this stuff, including Boston. And Boston was the subject of litigation last year, which has been resolved. I also took a look at the ordinance that was promulgated by the City of Somerville, City of Cambridge. Even your own Counselor Palmucci submitted an ordinance some time ago, and I took a look at that. And what, what, what I've offered here is, is a framework, which liberally borrows from the City of Boston primarily as a model, because I think it was really well done. I should also mention at this point that another town, the town of Lynnfield, actually banned BnBs, Airbnbs. And that was, that was done by that town in the aftermath of a house being rented as a home share unit, where a party took place for a reunion with around 100 guests, and a homicide occurred as a result of that. So, in, in, to respond to that, Lynnfield actually passed an ordinance banning Airbnbs, and that was challenged by Airbnb, and it went to the land court. And the land court upheld Lynnfield's bylaw. So, that's just an FYI. But this proposed ordinance, as Counselor Phelan just detailed, sets up regulatory requirements, and it requires that unit operators register any unit that's being offered as a short-term, as a short-term rental. And it requires that a city registry be set up. And so, really, the theme of this, the themes would be for the city to exert some control under an ordinance, and, and to have an ordinance that would allow to, the city to know where some of these short-term rentals are taking place, so that the city can get a handle on these things. And by, by short-term rental, we're talking about rentals of, whether they be houses or two- and three-family unit apartments, or parts of a dwelling, like a room in, in an apartment, for fewer than 31 days. So, that's what we mean by short-term. And as Counselor Phelan said, the goal is to protect the residential character of neighborhoods. And talking to the mayor's office, and Chris Walker and I have had discussions, and Counselor Phelan and I have had discussions, one of the key points would be to protect Resident A neighborhoods, which, which contains, as you know, single-family homes. As I said, I see this proposed ordinance as a framework, which offers some concrete provisions, which, you know, you can see and you can consider. But these are examples of provisions that the city may wish to consider, including in what ultimately becomes the final product ordinance. No doubt that there will be some changes. I, by no means do I see this as a final project tonight. I'm, I'm seeing, I see that there'll be changes or revisions that might need to be made. But I also want to hear, you know, tonight, what councilors' concerns are. The, the general categories of short-term rentals, remember, rentals fewer than 31 days would be home share units, which would be sharing a, a home, an entire home. Or limited share unit, which would be renting out part of an apartment or part of a home, such as a bedroom. And then there would be, another category would be owner-adjacent units, which would be where an owner would be present in, say, a two-family, and he would be offering one of the apartments in the two-family as, as a home share, as a, as a short-term rental unit for a limited period of time. It could be two weeks, it could be three weeks, it could be a month. Another category of short-term rentals would be home shares, where, where the unit or the, or the home would not be the operator's primary residence. Now, my understanding is that Boston, which settled with Airbnb, does not allow non-primary residents rentals. In other words, no investors, so that, so that you don't have people buying up condominiums and, and just renting them out as short-term rentals as a business. I don't, I don't believe that Boston allows that. Our proposed ordinance suggests that primary residence is required under the ordinance. But we have some, there are some inconsistent provisions in there, which you'll, you'll see if you go through it. But I think we need to establish some, some consensus as to what the city wants to do, and then make all the provisions consistent. So, the questions that I think need to be answered, does the city wish to allow short-term rentals of units where the unit is not the operator's primary residence? That's an important point. And then another question would be, does the city wish to allow rentals only where the unit is owner-occupied or owner-adjacent? And that is something that the City of Somerville did, and that they included in their ordinance. So, other than that, as, as Counselor Phelan said, the, the ordinance sets up a fee schedule to register, depending on what the category of the, of the short-term rental is, what, what kind of unit it is. It sets up enforcement. And you'll note that enforcement of these provisions and maintenance of the, of the registry would come under the purview of Jay Duca and his Department of Inspection Services. And this is, this is, you know, potentially a big task. And, you know, I do, I'm glad to see that, that Mr. Duke is there tonight. But it, the ordinance places regulatory enforcement authority, as I said, with inspectional services, and includes requirements, enforcement procedures, and penalties for violations. So, it has some teeth in it. So, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to, try and answer those.
At this point, I'd like to open it up to see if there's any questions from my colleagues. And it looks like Bill Harris. Bill?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Chairman. As far as questions, I just want to clear, clear something up. There was an article, front page of the article in the ledger, and Mary does a great job. I just want to say, this, I did not spearhead this, 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 what took place today. Chuck Phelan brought this forward on several lists, jumped on board. And Chuck mentioned how, when he was on the campaign trail, I remember five years ago, I was on the campaign trail because we had an Airbnb. And I'm not mentioning any names, I'm not going to give it up. But the owner of the Airbnb, because of such a public neighborhood disruption, and there was issues with, with our, with our legal department, and later on, as I, once I got into office, but the owner of this Airbnb was waiting on my front door, wouldn't let me in the house. Because, you know, people were protesting, and rightfully so. But without giving that up, I've also now, through the, through the whole, my last, my years here in, in office, I've, I've mentioned many a times, and have spoken about this many a times, of the things that are going on. I mentioned about how frat houses, you have weekend frat houses on these short-term rentals. We talk about, Chuck mentioned, and again, I applaud him for what he did. He, the protection of Res A. Anybody knows that, me and every counselor who's gone in front of the zoning board, we are doing everything we can to protect, protect Res A. This is so important, and I'm glad that Mr. Durkin's here, and obviously, the mayor is on board as well. And that's important when we, when we do put an ordinance up, that, that the mayor approves it, so it can go forward. And, and again, there's, there's, I can't even tell you what's been going on in North Quincy, and what potential, potential projects that are taking place. Again, and we also need to, I would love to see a chance to be able to go into some of the, some of the major projects, especially along the waterfront in Squanum, that, that possibly, you know, if we could get wording in there, we can go in and check, because I think we, I think that, you know, we lost one in the zoning board. And Jay, Jay, I see Jay's just popped up, Jay Duca. Jay would probably, you know, would say to me that, that, that he would agree with me that since, since day one, I've been dealing with Airbnbs that have been a problem. And it's, it's taxing to the people who are in the neighborhoods. We have people who are going into houses, neighborhoods, that have no ownership. And so, I support everything that we're putting forward. Anything that could be added on to put more teeth, more bite into this, I welcome it. And I'll pass it along. Thank you, Madam, Madam Chairperson. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Bill. Brian Palmucci had his hand up next. We're going to go to Brian, and then Dave, then Nina.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chairman Mahoney. Mr. Durkin, good evening.
Good evening, Counselor.
Steve, were you able to determine, based on the state database, how many Airbnbs are in the City of Quincy?
No, I don't know the answer to that.
That's something that we can get, though, right? That's my understanding is that there's a central registry with the state after the state passed the Airbnb registry requirements a couple of years ago, right?
Yes, there is a registry requirement. So, to the extent that short-term rental operators are complying with the law, that is something that we can ascertain.
Oh, I, I can tell you that, from my knowledge of kind of how that registry works, it's not, it's not voluntarily, it's not voluntary compliance. Airbnb sends the lists essentially to the state.
Right.
It's a database maintained by Airbnb. So, you can't, you can't have a physical address in Quincy without, that you're offering on Airbnb without being on that registry. I don't know about the other sites, HomeAway and the, and the other sites. But Airbnb, I think, is, has 60%, 70% market share. So, the bulk of them will be on Airbnb. But I don't know what we're doing with this tonight, but I would certainly like to see that before voting, for a couple of reasons. One, we heard from one person who spoke during the public hearing tonight. We got three letters, one from someone who, who has an Airbnb in the city, and then two from people who were aggrieved by an Airbnb that was in their neighborhood, that was, that was causing a problem. And I feel as though, you know, this is the kind of thing that we do, and then we don't know the impact that it has on people until they realize what we did, right? And so, while I fully agree with this, and in fact, it drafted- And so, well, I fully agree with this, and in fact, it drafted similar legislation a couple of years ago, but so I fully agree with the intent here. I just don't want our good intent to to turn into bad action. So I guess what I'm trying to say is um, I would like to see at least the numbers from Airbnb, and if we can get the um the property addresses, which again, I think we should be able to. I would like to notify those folks of what we're uh of what we're talking about, because there may be perspectives in that group. I think we can all pretty much get the perspective of the aggrieved neighbor. Uh, we've all the ward councillors and I'm sure the at-large councillors have gotten those calls. We know what the issues are, people coming and going at all hours of night, uh making a lot of noise, extra parking, um absentee landlords. Uh, I I don't think we've had too many big parties, but that's obviously another issue. So I think we we get that perspective. I would just like to hear a little bit more from the folks who are running these Airbnbs. I don't know if they're, I don't know who they are. I don't know if we're talking about professional, you know, mini hotelers who are just, they own a a an apartment building and they're all Airbnbs. Or if we're talking about, you know, I don't know, middle aged couple who who have a two family, uh and they rent out the other one. You know, especially in in these difficult times with COVID. If this in any way impacts the way somebody makes money and makes a living, you know, I I'd like to know how much and how much of an effect we're going to have if we essentially um regulate somebody out of business. Uh, again, I don't believe that they belong in a residential A uh district, but before I would take a vote, I'd like to know that I'm not, you know, taking taking away someone's only income, some, you know, people who've been unemployed in the pandemic, but um, I agree with the sentiment. Just curious as to what the, um, I want to learn more about what the effect would be. Because I also think with the we, that that registry for state purposes, because there's a is the state impact fee, so we could calculate based on the state impact fee out of Quincy, what what type of revenue that's generating. We could also, you know, that could also uh be used to determine, you know, what the prices of this are and and how much additional value to certain properties this is, because again, under whatever scenario we we regulate here and allow for Airbnb, say, you know, for my money, I think, um, if somebody lives in the house, like if it's a two family or there's an in-law suite, or if they're renting out a room, I I don't have a problem with that, as long as the owner is on site. That that to me um is a lot more um acceptable, I think, for the for the neighbors too. But but that changes the valuation of their property. If they're generating income of fifty thousand dollars a year off of that uh property, and we're we're assessing that other unit based on uh, not on a revenue generating basis, but on the, you know, assessed value based on prior year sales, then we're probably doing ourselves a disservice because we're not adequately valuing that property. But yeah, I, at the end of the day, I I just, I would like to, I I want to hear what my colleagues have to say about the various questions you've asked, Mr. Durkin. Um, I'll sit back and listen, uh, but I would like to see if we can't figure out how many of these Airbnbs are in the city, and if we can't perhaps take another go at um getting those people to weigh in in terms of um, you know, what what impact this would have on them and whether or not they have any ideas. Thank you. Is that something you can do for us? Steve, can you look?
I can do that.
Okay.
I, and I did, councillor, I I appreciate um the the questions and the comments. Um, I just wanted to point out that one of the, one of the ordinances that I did review, and I believe it was Somerville, actually, um they put in there a provision that limited the number of calendar days that a unit could be offered as a as a short term rental. And I think it was maybe no more than three months or four months out of a out of a calendar year, which would be, you know, just another way to keep it from being a year round business.
Right. And again, that's the kind of the, we can shape this however we want, and there's so many contours to it that learning more about what people are actually doing um with these Airbnbs, I think, would uh help improve what what we design, you know, if if we find that they're summer units, right? And maybe that's a problem time, or maybe that's, you know, less than a problem, that maybe the winter ends up being more of a problem. I don't know. Uh, but we can, again, with the way these companies work, it's all algorithms, and they have all this data. Um, I've seen, uh, I've seen, you know, I've used Airbnb. And I've seen the data. You can see, you know, average room rental and average occupancy rates. I'd just like to see where we're at. I know S- Somerville has that, and then Boston also has you. They limit um investor Airbnbs. It has to be an owner occupant, and then I think it's also limited to thirty days. Something like that, that there's a limit as well on the one. Um, I thought it was from Boston, but it could be someone else's, even on the owner occupants. So there's really, like you said, from, you can go from banning them altogether to not regulating them at all. And um, you know, I don't think anyone's advocating for either of those spectrums. We find some sort of middle ground or, you know, lean to one side or the other that 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 fits Quincy and makes sense for for our neighborhoods. So, all right, thank you. Look forward to getting that, Steve.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Palmucci. Um, I I should have started the meeting by saying that the intention tonight was to overview and and to review everything and and then hopefully come back and and um and be able to dive a little bit deeper, but um, with that, Dave McCarthy, you're up next. You um, you're up next, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Chairwoman Mahoney. Chuck Phelan, councillor Phelan, for putting this together. I know all the ward councillors, well, all the councillors have run into it. Um, good evening, Mr. Durkin.
Good evening, councillor McCarthy.
Uh, I want to take it a little bit further. I I agree with Mr. Palmucci uh in regards to a little more statistics, but um, my big question, and I had a few of these um, over the past twelve months, eighteen months, uh, right in the heart of Rezay uh in Ward One is um, what do these do for Quincy? Mr. Durkin, what what do they do at all if the owner, let's say, doesn't live in Quincy and just disrupts a Rezay, any neighborhood within Airbnb? I I'd love to see what Lynn did um in regards to how they were able to ban Airbnbs completely. I'll also um, take up where councillor Palmucci said and talk about maybe um, if we can't do that for some reason, or we don't want to do that for some reason, um, to look at uh as many regulations as we can on these places. Uh, the two instances that I had, you know, there were hundred and fifty people at a house in Ward One, right in the middle of a neighborhood on a Friday night. I had Mr. Duca and company get involved. They took care of it as they usually do in their professional manner, but my question is, overall, with Airbnbs, what's the positivity for us at all? It looks like somebody else is using a community to, you know, make some money, and the people in the house probably don't have any disregard for the neighborhood.
Well, councillor, as you know, I'm not a policymaker. The policymakers are the mayor and the city council. Um, so I'm not a side or a position on that. Um, but what I will tell you is that the town of Linfield um, actually enacted an amendment to its zoning code to ban Airbnbs, to ban short term rentals. Um, and and I would just suggest that that might be something too that the city uh could consider doing, that that I could consider doing as sort of a a belt and suspenders way to to monitor these things. And so it would be possible for us to make an amendment to our zoning code, um restricting the residential areas where the short term rentals could be through uh changing our table, through changing our table of uses, and that's something I can talk to Jay Duca about. But it, you know, in answer to your question, what what does uh a a short term rental, say, for example, in a in apartment buildings or condominium buildings do for the city? I mean, it's just, it's i- i- if you have an investor come into a condominium unit, and they condominium building, and they own five units in the building, and they're doing short term rentals, two, two weeks, three weeks, a month um on all of those, it's it's a business. I mean, it's it's a for profit business, and I don't know that it adds anything to the city, but um, that's that's um, that's something for the council and the mayor to decide.
Yeah, and I, Mr., I totally, Steve, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was just kind of thinking here, saying to myself, we entertain this, and it's great that councillor Phelan put together um, the ordinance, and you worked on it, and a ton of work here, and I I've been looking at it, which I have to digest a little bit more. And then I just think of the headaches that we get day in and day out with the phone calls, because it's usually um, something that in some cases gets out of control, and they don't, you know, if it's in Merrymount, they they don't respect the place because they don't live there. And the guy who's running or the lady that's running the show is not in Quincy. They live down the Cape now, so they don't care. So um, it just brings a lot of turmoil, and I'd I'd like to take a look at that, see how hard that would be, or see if we can climb that mountain a little bit, but also uh I I'd love to um, get more information, as councillor Palmucci said.
Councillor, thank you, and and I will do my best to get that information. If I could just ask you, councillor, and and the other councillors, as you speak, if you could, uh, when when you recount examples of problems that you've experienced in your ward, or if you're a councillor at large in general in the city, if you could just tell me what kind of dwelling we're talking about. Is it a single family home that has caused problems with Airbnbs? Is it a two or three family home? Is it, is it a condominium building? Is it an apartment building? I mean, where, what's the source of the pro? What are the sources of the problem?
Yeah, I'll talk to you offline, but it it with me, it's it's, I can name you, I can give you the addresses, and it's three, it's single family homes scattered.
Okay.
So I, I'm good. Thanks, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Um, let's see, I just lost track of my list. Nina, and councillor Liang, you're up next. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Steve. I'm just gonna go through some of the things that highlighted on the pages here that are in front of me, and then I have some other questions that aren't in the pages here for the ordinance. So the first thing is under definitions for short term rentals. It says here that a short term rental may or may not be arranged through a booking agent. So are we opening this up to you know, agents and or like booking sites outside of what's currently available online, like the Airbnbs and whatever, the Homeaways and whatnot? Like, are you talking specifically like travel agents now?
Well, it's possible that people would be offering short term rentals of their units without using Airbnb or another outfit that's similar to Airbnb. I mean, that's possible. They could be, they could, I sup- I I suppose that could be done, or it's been done in the past. So this would govern any short term rental. You know, even even if that's not being done, even if it's only being done through booking agents, but but it covers all of them.
Okay. And the way this is written, it says it can't be more, or it has to be for a period fewer than thirty one consecutive calendar days for a fee. So realistically, somebody could rent it out for thirty one days, not rent it out for one day, and then start renting out the the following day, correct?
Yeah, they could. I mean, it's, the, you know, even the even the state law registry, um, it exempts you know, leases, it exempts month to month, and and even even tenancies at will. You know, the the typical kinds of tenancies, but this is different.
Okay, all right. Um, so I don't have any changes to that then. Um, on the next page, the home share unit. It says a residential unit offered as a short term rental that is the operator's primary resident. Occupancy shall be limited to three bedrooms and six guests in a home share unit at any given time. So this doesn't specify that it has to be owner occupied while it's being rented, and that goes back to your earlier question, right, which is to to determine here in this meeting or any future discussions, whether or not um, this is going, the home share unit is going to apply to a residential unit offered as a short term rental while it's being owner occupied or not being owner occupied?
I guess the question that I need to have answered is whether the city wishes is that home shares offered for short term rentals be units that are the operator's primary residence. So you know, say somebody, say somebody lives uh in a home for eleven months out of the year, and they go to Florida, and they and they rent it out for one month. That's a short term rental. But that's their primary residence. I mean, they still have a really close connection to that place. And you you can contrast that with someone who um buys up five condominiums in a condominium building and just rents them out repeatedly for short term rentals. It's not their primary residence. Um, so th- those those situations are different, and I think we need to hear from the council as as to um whether you think that those situations should be treated differently.
Yeah, I mean, I personally like the idea of having this apply only to, or that it should only be allowed for units that are owner occupied, or that it's the owner's primary residence, or the operator's primary residence in the terms we're speaking about here. Does that also apply to um multiple, multiple family homes as well? So let's say I own a three family home, and one of the units is my primary residence, but I'm renting out the other two units. That would still be applicable, like I could still do that under the way we're writing it, if we write it as such that it can only be owner occupied um residence, right?
What you're talking about, councillor, is an owner adjacent unit, which is, which is allowed um under this ordinance, and it's pretty, it's it's allowed pretty much any ordinance that I've I've looked at. So if there's a three family home, and and the owner lives in one of the, one of the units, and he's uh, the the owner is offering as a short term rental, you know, one of the units in the three family home, yeah, that's that's permissible.
Okay, and then what 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 would the process be to ensure that a a residence is actually somebody's primary residence? Like, what would the process be for us to make sure that, let's say I register my unit, and I say, okay, I'm gonna go, this is my primary residence, but I'm going to start using it, you know, through Airbnb. What what would either your, or Inspeccional Services, I think, is what this is going through? What would I need to submit to make sure that it is actually my primary residence as I'm claiming?
Yeah, I'm just going by memory, but um so i- in order to offer these short term rentals, you have to register with Inspeccional Services. And you have to show um that you are that it's your primary residence. And in order to show that, you have to show two documents, at least two documents. And those would include driver's license, voting registration, uh deed, but it would have to be two. They're all listed, they're all listed in the ordinance, and I could probably find it if I
I think it's towards the end when it talks about the registration.
Yeah.
The registration. Okay, I'll go back and take a look at that. Um, another thing I had a question on that's not in here is a question about parking. So similar to what um my colleagues have already mentioned, who had spoken, you know, it's not just the the noise issues that have come up, and then just concerns about how many people are being packed into some of these units, and the safety of those who are coming in and out of these units as well for the the neighboring residents, but I know parking has definitely come up as well, and I'm wondering if there's a way that we can um, write something into this ordinance that then also relates to any parking for those who are renting at any of these buildings. And so I I guess my first question to you on that is, when you were looking at some of uh these other cities and towns and the orders that they have, were there any provisions in there for parking?
Not that I recall, and I'm not, I'm not going to tell you that I'm I'm sure of that. Um, but that is a good point, councillor. Parking would obviously be an issue.
Yeah, I would love to take a look at that as well and see what we can work out. That would be um, you know, useful for Quincy and and for this ordinance as well, because again, I know that, for me anyways, is one of the um, the things that I've been seeing from folks is the concern around parking.
Okay, I'll um I'll uh see what I can come up with for that, to address the parking concern.
Great, thank you. And then um, just for the the last question I have too, is this safety regulations? Um, so I know someone who um is actually really well versed with fire safety in and outside, you know, commercial and residential units, and I think she brought up a really good point, right? I mean, we have, and this applies, I think, to more residential buildings rather than single or multi-family homes. Um, there are certain regulations that need to take place, you know, as far as fire alarms and how many people you can have um in a certain dwelling, and you know, I You know, as far as fire alarms and how many people you can have, um, in a certain dwelling and, you know, I think. What I've heard over the years with the safety regulations around that is if you pack a bunch of people into a unit. And, you know, the, the fire regulations or the, any of those sort of safety regulations, regulations aren't up to date. That could be really dangerous, not just for the people who are renting the Airbnb. But also the other people in that residential complex or building, you know, so I would love to either. Um, and I think this is another follow-up that I would love to, to follow up with you on, is either work with Jay. Um, or the fire department or, or some combination of both to see what we can write in here to ensure that. Particularly when it applies to units that are in larger buildings, um, that we have something in here where we can actually take a look at the safety. Hazards that could be posed in that specific building.
Yeah, it's a good point. Um, the, this proposed ordinance that you have before you under short-term residential, uh, rental registry. I did, I did include some provisions which address, um, fire safety. And in here it says all residential units registered to be offered as short-term residential rentals. Um, conduct, are required to have a fire safety inspection conducted by the Quincy Fire Department. And any operator shall present to the Department of Inspection Services satisfactory evidence that the, that the, um. That the registration has successfully passed such fire safety inspection within thirty days of registration. So I mean, that's in there.
Thank you. It is in here. Thank you. Yeah. Perfect.
But you know, there may, there may be other safety concerns too that need to be addressed.
Okay. Um, yeah, again, I'll, I'll follow up with Jay on this too, to make sure that there isn't anything that I'm missing potentially with this, but I appreciate you pointing that out. That's great. Um, that's all I have for now. I just, I guess would sort of just wrap my commentary up with the fact that I'm really glad we're addressing this and I'm happy that. You know, in sort of a continuation of Counselor Palmucci's conversation from a few years ago, that Counselor Phelan, um, brought this to us in such a complete packet. You know, I, I think more and more we're gonna see, um, other sites popping up. And the more that we, I think, are building units here in the city and the train starts becoming more easily accessible. We're just gonna see more folks coming to the city and doing this. And so I do appreciate the concern that there are investors who are very attracted to this city and have been for quite a number of years. And, you know, as they are buying a properties as a business, they are going to drive up the prices for those of us who actually want to buy a home and. You know, live here and stay here, um, and make that sustainable for us. So, but to Counselor Palmucci's point, you know, there are some folks who are renting. Units or their homes or their residences because they need the additional income to be able to stay, you know, in here in the city. So I think, I think this is, you know, the right path that we're on is to make sure that we are looking at these options in front of us. But keeping in mind what the impacts are all around. So, um, thank you, Steve, for answering my questions and thank you, Counselor Phelan, for bringing this in front of us. Um, that's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Um, Counselor Crowell.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good thing to, uh, my fellow colleagues and, uh, Counselor Durkin. I could see, um, you know, that there was a, a good body who worked on to, you know, your point, uh, provide a framework or, uh, an introductory. Or an entry point of, uh, of conversation. And I also think, um, you know, when I, when I've worked with you on different things. Um, it's always been helpful to me knowing that, uh, you know, you sat as a ward counselor, uh, once upon a time as well, which I, I think is important. I'm sure that you can identify with, um, with some of the challenges that I've heard articulated here tonight through some of my other colleagues. With respect to these business models. So before I get into sort of my thoughts, uh, just to answer your question. Uh, there's two standout, uh, players that, um, that are front of my mind in, uh, more to. Both single families, both in res B. One would be, um, what did you call it? Uh, owner-occupied with adjacent units.
Owner-adjacent unit.
Owner-adjacent unit. Um, that was probably the most. Most entertaining one of them. And, uh, we also had one that was, uh, res B, single-family, owner-not-occupied. Owner very hard to track down, said another way. Um, you know. Again, I think this is a, a dynamite framework, conversation. I do think, uh, that some, um, you know, some, some remedy. Put forward as far as this goes. One thing that I was wondering, like, so we contemplate the, uh, the intake process, right? So I'm an Airbnb entrepreneur. I come in and I should just ask, uh, through you to inspectional services. Jay, uh, you guys put forward a Herculean effort down there at, uh, fifty-five C Street. Do you have the resources to, to take this on as well?
Yes, my team is ready to, uh, create all our online digital applications. We're gonna take the lead from Steve. As far as, uh, documenting, uh, that the people own the homes and, uh, you know, different various documents that we'll be asking for. So we're, we're, uh, ready to get geared up for this. Yes.
You guys are always ready to get geared up. Like McCarthy said, you, uh, you just. It's amazing what you do, uh, level of productivity with, uh, you know, not, not a huge department. So just wanna check in with you there. Thank you, Jay. Uh, back to you, Counselor Durkin. Uh, so the intake process, right? I'm an entrepreneur. I go down, I either digitally submit my. Application or I go in person to do so. I believe it said something along the lines of, you, you know, you, you have direct interfaces with the Department of Inspection Services. I think there's a, a combination or tandem with maybe the health department and/or police. I read that correctly.
Yeah, um, that, background checks and. Just a screening process with the health department, wh- whether there have been any complaints to the health department. You know, which, you know, the health department gets complaints about rats and mice and, and, and all, all sorts of things like that.
Sure. Yeah, of course. So one of the things that I would just kind of submit as for thought, seeing that, you know, this is kind of the, uh, the brainstorming session. Uh, maybe a takeaway is that I didn't see it in there, but it's been helpful to me with, uh, items such as. You know, when somebody comes in and they want to, uh, you know, apply for a development project, they come in and they want to apply for. TV license, you know, one of the mandates, obviously. First and foremost is to, uh, to reach out to your ward counselor. But I think that has always been, uh, extremely helpful to me. Uh, just when and if, in, in the event I get the telephone call, uh, at least I have sort of a wherewithal that, um, you know, as to what's going on. Uh, that's one. Two is, um, and again, I, I, I'm, I'm welcoming input on this. But, um, you know, much like a development application goes forward, I could possibly see, you know, part, a portion of that fee. That the Airbnb entrepreneur is paying to the city is utilized to, uh, notify neighbors within, maybe you call it three hundred feet. So probably modeling, uh, what the program is with respect to licensing as well as, um. Zoning in terms of the notification to the people, cause I, again, it's a business and we do the same thing. Uh, for any other respective business coming into, uh, a specific ward, uh, indoor of the city at large. So I, I'd welcome sort of your feedback on that, but that's, that's, that's where mine. Is like communicate, communicate, communicate. Any thoughts around there, Steve?
Yeah, and, and you're right. As a former ward counselor, I'm, I'm very aware of the importance of keeping the ward counselor. Notified about what's going on in the ward, you know, right in the neighborhoods. Um, the last thing you want to get is a, is a call on a Friday night saying that something happened in your ward that's affecting. Twenty or twenty-five people and they're really upset about it and you didn't know anything about it. So, so I get that. Um, and so there, there could be in this ordinance, similar to what we did. With, um, the small cell antenna ordinance, we could have a provision where. Uh, inspectional services would notify the counselor of, uh, of, uh, an application for, um, to be registered. I suppose I, that could happen. I, I could take a look at that. Um, as far as notifying a butters. I don't remember specifically whether that's in here. I know I thought about putting a provision in there where director butters would be notified. And I, I can't say with absolute confidence that, that it's in there. Um. But that would, that wouldn't be quite as much as notifying a butters within three hundred, you know, three hundred feet. That's something that could happen.
There it is.
I'm willing, I'm willing to look at that. Um, it's a, it's a good point. And maybe, um. Maybe that, that sort of provision could find its way into the final product.
Yeah, and just like to kind of take a step back and I appreciate sort of your thought around that. Um. You know, I'm just, you establish more of a communication protocol with the Airbnb entrepreneur and the ward counselor in a sense. And unlike the small cell tower, like I think the requirement there is to send a certi-. A certified first-class mailing. So I get, you know, if there's a small cell tower going up in Counselor Harris's district, like I get notification of it. In Ward Two. Like, it seems to just go to everyone. I don't know if anyone else is having that similar experience, but I'm not necessarily looking for that. I'm just, a simple email, uh, from inspectional services, they're okay saying, hey, you know, here's, here's the application. Here's, here's where it's going. And, but I think more importantly, notifying the, uh, the stakeholders, right? The people who. In that neighborhood. I think that is, uh, just as critical as a notification to the ward counselor. So I just wanted to, uh, to sort of offer that up as food for thought, cause I think, um, you know, I think it could help.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, um, Counselor Crowell. Um, Counselor DeBona, I just, you're up next. I just wanted you to know that we have about four minutes before we're gonna have to close and open up the regular council.
Sounds good, Madam Chair. Thank you. Um, I just wanna, um, thank you for listening to my colleagues. I wanna thank Chuck Phelan for, for introducing this ordinance and asking, uh. Myself and the other colleagues to co-sponsor with you. I think this is a very important, uh, measure for the citizens, the residents. Uh, our families, our children of, of this, of the city of Quincy. Um, I've had to deal with these as an at-large council throughout the city of Quincy. Um, I think we need to dive into this and look a little bit more detailed about what we wanna do as a council, cause. The citizens are looking to us to make a decision on this. Um, do we go the Linfield route? Do we go without having any type of Airbnb in our city? Or do we go with a, and then this is a recommendation to the rest of the group, is do we go with the owner-occupied or adjacent dwelling next door to it? Um, do we go with those measures? Um, you know, obviously we're gonna come back and revisit this, but just, you know, um. Just a quick story, uh, we, I, um, as an at-large counselor, I try to give the, the ward council the, the, the full authorization on these. But we had a neighborhood meeting, um, in Ward One with Dave McCarthy last year. Where somebody was trying to do a variance at their home to add more space for their Airbnb. And the residents were very upset about this. Um, um, the neighborhood was upset about, um, about the parking situation. That would spill out into the, into the, into the, uh, street, didn't have enough room in the parking lot. Um, this is something we have to consider with, with variances coming in. Um, are they gonna be adding to these Airbnbs, um, more, more space? Um, I, I, just a question for Mr. Durkin, um, real quick. They're not paying into like a hotel motel tax, are they? Are, this is just their money, right? Is that correct?
Well, the, the, the state has enacted, Counselor, the, the state has now, has enacted an excise tax on short-term rentals. And the, the state legislation has allowed cities and towns to enact its own excise tax. And that ordinance is actually, it should be before you. Um, and we also, um. Have available the possibility of enacting, I mean, the city enacting a community impact fee. So, you know, there, there are means of getting revenue from, for, you know, from the short-term rental, uh, operators.
Lastly, and this is something that I, I just wanna ask my fellow councils, we might revisit this at some point, is the penalties. Um, we had the penalties under, um, number three here of A three under penalties is for a hundred dollars. I don't know how the, the council feels about maybe upping that to maybe two hundred dollars. Um, for not basically, uh, reporting the property. And just going in and trying to rent it on its own time without actually registering it. Um, it's something to consider. I, I know we're up against time here. And then again, on, um, under the penalties. Uh, one ninety-six, uh, fourteen point seven penalties under B. Uh, failure to comply with notice of violation is, does the city council, if we're gonna do Airbnbs here in Quincy. Do we wanna add that to two hundred dollars? It's just something to throw out there. It's something to, uh, a little bit digest and, um, when you have to come back with the information, Mr. Durkin. We can revisit what we wanna do with amendments and stuff based on the council's input. Um.
Yeah, we, we could look at that, Counselor. I just, I just wanted to point out that those penalties. Were not one-time penalties either. They were penalties of a hundred dollars per day, per day that the violation continues. So it could get pretty hefty, but that's something we can look at too.
Yes, thank you. And, um, I, you know, I've, I've worked with Jay Duka on these and just, you know, sometimes a bigger penalty will make them move, will make them. Um, do the right thing, um, go by the law. So, um, this is a great start to start with. Um, I know we're running out of time here and I wanna thank, uh, um, Madam Mahoney for, um, for allowing us, allowing me to get to seven-thirty here. But, um, I know we'll revisit this, but it's a good, it's a good starting point. It gives everybody a little consensus of where we're all at. So with that, um, I wanna thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna thank, um, um, Chuck Phelan, the Ward Five Council for bringing this about. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Counselor DeBona. Uh, with that, I'd like to close the meeting so we can open up our regular scheduled meeting. So, um, if we could do that. I'll turn this over to Nina. We can read the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and just, um, open this up and recess and then, uh, Madam Chair, we'll go back to you after this, um, as well. So, let's see here. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you call the role for the regularly scheduled council meeting, please?
Counselor Kane.
Counselor Crowell. Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Eight members.
Thank you. If we could, thank you. If we could all just take a moment of silence in honor of all of our women and men who are serving here and abroad. As well as keeping in mind, um, all of the first responders and essential workers who are still currently, uh, on the front lines of this COVID-nineteen battle. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you read the open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived. By those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charlie D. Baker's March tenth, twenty-twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty. Quincy City Council is holding this council meeting via remote conferencing services and is being held and aired on Quincy Access Television, QA TV. Channel QA TV nine government access. With that, I'm going to recess the regularly scheduled council meeting and turn it back over to my ordinance committee chair, um, Madam Chairwoman, Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Um, Counselor DeBona, I think you were, you were complete, you were finished, correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm finished. I just, uh, I'd like to yield if anyone else wants to speak a little bit and just get a little bit more, uh, information on where the consensus is with the council. On how they feel about, um, maybe just, um, the Linfield route or a little bit more restriction. Just to give an oversight of what, what other counselors feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, I'd, I'd like to, um, to offer the floor to Counselor Harris.
Thank you again, and thank you, um, my, my fellow counselors, uh, for indulging me again. Um, and with. Uh, no, um, I have a whole bunch of points I wanna make. Number one, if you, you, you listen, listen to the number of folks, and I know, uh, Counselor Crowell, um, had some issues with, uh, with, um. Some, with Airbnb. But when you think about the cities that were mentioned, Lynn, Linfield. I believe Swambs Court also, and you think about Ward Six, you think about Ward One, you think about, um. Ward, Ward Five. Um, Chucks, I'm sorry, Chucks, um, uh, Ward. Think about it. What's the common denominator? Waterfront property, views of the city. People will invest in order to be able to. Buy property and hopefully it'll gain value, but while they're doing that and investing more probably. They're, uh, they're being able to survive. And I understand what Counselor Palmucci mentioned, uh, about. Airbnbs worried about. Um, being able to survive with COVID. But just think about it. With COVID in other states, rest, um, other states, you have, you have, um. I've had friends that went up to hotel. I've had friends that went up to hotels that the local folks, because they had Massachusetts plates, they got visited and they wound up coming home because, because of COVID. Because all of a sudden, they're in a neighborhood and there's testing people, they say to quarantine fourteen days. If we're, if we've loosened that up, but who knows where we're going at this point moving forward as the months are going on. It really, it, it really is, 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 I don't want to use COVID to protect places that are not doing the right thing, but that's no, what, what Counselor Palmucci said was, is spot on. We need to protect folks who have done the right thing. But there are folks that are out there that are doing the wrong thing. And we have time, notes I wrote, we have time during COVID to get it right. So I'm not, I don't want to rush this. I agree with everybody about, you know, let's get it right the first time so that, I said earlier, let's get some teeth in it, into it. And, you know, folks who own, I, I, example of it's last April, you know, right in the heat of, of it. And last April, just even my wife and myself, we were supposed to be in Ireland at a Airbnb of the night, shut down, shut everything down. And they did the right thing. And we have Airbnbs going on and during a time of COVID where there's no, no control, there's no, so maybe we have to bring the health department into this. And again, again, you know, there are so many innocent victims of, of, of this, of Airbnbs. And that, that's, again, I'm gonna reemphasize, is, is the, the neighbors that are dealing with this. And again, we, we can use COVID as, in two different ways. We, we can use it as we need to protect our, we have to protect our constituents? Or is there an owner that we have to protect in order not to go down the wrong way? I know in Ward Six, most of the folks that I had, have had to deal with, and there's a lot of them since in five years, these folks, they've made a lot of money and they bought big property and big money coming in. I just ask that, I'm willing to go along with the body. I just, let's get it right and let's protect our neighborhoods. And that's, that's, that's all I have to say. And thank you and sorry if I kind of reiterated what I said earlier. And again, thanks to Chuck Phelan for, you know, he spearheaded this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Counselor Phelan, would you like to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I think this was good. We got a lot, I mean, this was as I discussed with the chairman about, was to get it out, get a framework together. I know there's been some great questions by Counselor Palmucci, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Harris, several, Counselor Crowe thrown in, President, President Liang has thrown in a lot of great things that we need to take a look at. But I think you're right. It's time to take a look at it and try to get it right. My preference is always for owner occupied because as I was sitting here, I was counting up the number of problems since I got in office and I haven't even been in there a year yet. And one of the things is almost every one of them is not owner occupied. There's single-family homes and they got an address listed and one of the addresses, I won't go into the address of it, was Malden. And there's problem with cars, there's problem with it not being cleaned up. It used to be, it used to be a house with a very prominent person here in Quincy, Billy Goodsize House, single-family home with a great neighborhood. And it went on the Airbnb and it's been nothing but troubles. So that's kind of where the spirit of the law is. But I think we've got a lot of great things. We need to get some more information. I thank Counselor Durkin. I'd also like to thank our Inspeccional Chief, Jay Duka, for coming out, answering a lot of questions. And he's had to deal with a lot of these. So that's really all my comments. Madam Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you and I look forward to getting, getting additional information, but eventually moving this thing forward. Sorry for text unable. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Phelan. So I want to thank Steve Durkin for coming forward tonight and giving us an overview of what the ordinance is. I think we do have some things that we would like to come back into this committee to just discuss a little bit further. And some of it does have to do with, several of the counselors asked multiple questions. I did have questions today, Steve, when we talked about parking and about preferences for owner occupied. However, I do think that Counselor Palmucci brought up is a, is a, it's a, it's a great starting point to be able to come back and discuss how many people are registered and to take a look at it from a different direction. So we're looking at it from both sides of, of the issue as we're trying to create an ordinance that is protective for our neighborhoods, but then also conducive for the people who are doing it right, to do the, do the right thing and be able to allow them to run, run profitable businesses as well. So if we could come back at a later date for that. So at this point, I'd just like to make a, have a motion to close out the the meeting with the intention that we'll come back to discuss these. We'll remain in committee and we'll come back and discuss in another, in another meeting for, for the further points.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we are going to go ahead and jump right back into the regularly scheduled council meeting. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Honoring of the COVID-19 heroes of the Quincy Recreation Department.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to recognize Michelle Hanley for the spectacular work that she did this summer. Many other communities were not able to open up the parks or have any recreational services for the families in their community. Not only did Michelle Hanley and the park, and the recreation department do that, they, they created a safe environment for families to be able to come and utilize our, our parks very early on in COVID, which, you know, we're, we're all living through this and it's very difficult. It's difficult for older people. It's difficult for families that have young kids. But to be able to have a safe environment where people were able to come into the parks, we had, she had recreation, recreation workers at the park monitoring those parks. And, and then to further open up the park parks to have kids to be able to go and actually have the services. It wasn't the same as it was in other years, but she had, it was established in a very safe way with opportunities for kids when they came in. They had to wash their hands. They had their, their recreation kids were all trained to make sure that they were doing the right thing. If there were any issues, there were even protocols on how they could go back. So with that, I would like to recognize Michelle Hanley and all of the recreation department for the spectacular work they have done and they continue to do as well as everybody else in the city.
Thank you, Counselor. Do you, I want to turn it over to Michelle to say a few words.
Very much. Through you, President Liang, to you, Counselor Mahoney. Thank you very much, Counselor Mahoney, and to all of the Quincy City Council. I'd first like to stop by thanking our main supporters and partners for these programs. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, I'll never even mention my name, but it's a, we have a full team down here. First of all, of course, Mayor Tom Coke, and from the mayor's office, Chris Walker and Helen Murphy. Dave Murphy, the Commissioner of Natural Resources, Ruth Jones, the Commissioner of the Health Department, Police Chief Paul Keenan and Lieutenant Patrick Feierty, the entire Park and Recreation Board, led by Chair Joe Brill and Vice Chair Connie Driscoll. For our primary supporters outside of the department. And then a huge thank you for the, our leaders here in the recreation department who had their boots on the ground from May to September. Chacha, Henry and Eric DeBoer, our full-time staff here in the recreation department. As you know, there's only three of us, even though we have two hundred and fourteen employees, part-time, there's only three full-time. Sue Pachetti and Stacy Roach, our summer program manager and aquatics director. Rich McAllister, Meg Peedy, Taylor McKay, our program, playground program supervisors. Donna Fantasy, the Director of Happy Acres, Brigitte Mazza, the Boating and Sailing Supervisor. Joe McCrity, Mallory Devote, JoJo, Howsey, Curran, Jorgensen, Deanna Bryan, Kate Stevenson, who are the clinic and workshop supervisors. Katie Walsh, Mayor Pat Henry and Craig Clark, who are the supervisors for the Shining Grant Prevention Program. The two hundred and fourteen other recreation leaders who came to work each day this summer with a smile on their face and made a difference in the life of a child. I can't thank them enough. And then, of course, last but not least, my family, my husband, Dan, and our children, Brian, Abigail and William, for the never-ending support. Barry Welch, my mentor and the Director of Recreation for, for so many years here in Quincy, always pointed out that we work during other people's leisure. And if it wasn't for the support of our wonderful families, we wouldn't be able to do, to do our job. This year, I know I mentioned Ruth Jones. I can't thank her enough. This year during the shutdown in March and April, rather than throwing in the towel as many cities and towns around us did, as, as the, as Counselor Mahoney pointed out, we went to work every day trying to figure out what we could do for the residents of Quincy and for our young employees this spring and summer. We called it our can-do summer. Working closely with Ruth, we reimagined our programs so that they fit into the guidelines set forth by the Commonwealth. Starting with the Park Monitor Program in May, we worked from scratch to create a safe and well-thought-out plan to work within the guidelines for reopening. Working with the Park Department and the Natural Resources Department, as I mentioned, Dave Murphy, we reopened the city's top-of-the-line facilities so that our residents can enjoy active and passive recreation in a safe setting. The tennis players were particularly grateful for the opportunity to play again. They were very happy to see our staff each and every day. From July through September, keeping safety first, of course, we provided good old-fashioned fun. Though we had to make some adjustments to our programs, as Counselor Mahoney pointed out, we were still able to offer loads of traditional activities and some new ones. I'm happy to report Counselor Kane was a recreation leader and I know several others of you are, have been involved in rec. I'm happy to report that there were plenty of gimp bracelets and keychains this summer. We still had gimp, plenty of archery, wiffle ball, the Pepsi Hot Shot Tournament still took place. And then some new activities. Happy Acres added yoga and zumba to the daily schedule. And we're very happy to, again, thank the mayor for his support. We were able to add five single-person sailboats to our fleet at the William F. Ryan Boating and Sailing Facility, to name a few. I couldn't be more proud of the entire recreation staff. They accepted these new rules and regulations we put into place without question or hesitation and went out to the front lines of fun this summer. I let each of them know at our closing meetings how grateful I am for their efforts this summer. This honor from you, the city council, is very unexpected. I mean, I know I said to Counselor Mahoney the other day on the phone, I couldn't be more grateful, but we, we just go to work every day and we work hard for the citizens of Quincy. But it is so nice for, for me and for all of our staff to know that the job that they did this summer and spring, starting in May, this spring and summer was noticed and appreciated by, by all of the elected officials in the city. And I know we got several thank you notes from parents and grandparents this summer as well and emails. So on behalf of the entire recreation department, the Quincy Recreation Department staff and myself, please accept our thanks and gratitude for this recognition tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Michelle. No, actually, today, not because, you know, it, it might be unexpected, but honestly, it's incredibly well deserved. I know a number of my colleagues are really excited to have you here tonight to personally express their thanks as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to my colleagues who would like to just make some comments for you. And so we're gonna start with Counselor Kane and then go to Counselor DeBona. Counselor Kane?
Michelle, thanks for the shout out. You're just an absolute pro. As a, a former camper up at Forbes Hill Park, who now lives in the Forbes Hill neighborhood and is a former boathouse staff member, it just brings joy to my heart to think about what you guys did this summer. And I hope that you recognize that your work should actually be put into a case study that should be shared with employees around the city and in companies around the world because this model of can-do attitude and making this summer what it was for the families and the children around the city was, was absolutely exemplary. I know personally, I just want to thank you for, for that effort. And I know that my neighbors, thank you as well for giving their kids things to do and such positive things to do and to forget about this stuff that's overhanging everybody's head right now. So thank you so much. You're the best.
You, you're welcome. The Forbes Hill families definitely loved us. They had about fifty kids a day up there. We had to add extra staff. With Ruth's permission, I added six staff up there. So they had a great time. Thank you, Mia.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam President. Michelle, what leadership you have brought on to the city of Quincy over this summer and during this COVID-19 pandemic, like Counselor Kane, just allowing our children to come out and play outdoors with each other is very important. This is a model of, of all, of everyone should take under. You know, one of the biggest things was visiting these, when you had the park monitors out there during the COVID-19 pandemic and having the proper washing stations in place and the collaboration amongst your, your staff and with the guidelines and the supervision and working with the children was huge. And without that, I don't know how our children would have done this summer going into school now. So I thank you for all the safety measures with Ruth, Ruth Jones as well. I thank your staff. And you've come into this role with great leadership, Michelle, and I wish you the best. We'll continue to keep on going and we'll alter things as COVID-19 pandemic we'll have to deal with. But thank you so much for, for all your help and all your hard work. Thank you.
You know, no, no, you'll love to hear that when we dropped Abigail off in school, Abigail's in, my daughter, Abigail's in Florida in college. And when we drove her car down there, Lily Abby and I went to Disney. And in Disney, in Walt Disney World, they have the same handwashing stations that we have at our parks. And when we were on the Winnie the Pooh ride, they stopped the ride, took out the same jug sprayers that we bought at Home Depot with the Carezak money and, and sprayed every car down and let the whole ride go through once. I took pictures and sent it back to the staff. I said, we did something right. If Disney's using the same measures as us, we, we must have done something right. So thank you very much, Noel.
You're welcome. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona. Counselor McCarthy, we'll go to you next, and then Counselor Phelan. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, President Liang. Thank you, Michelle, yourself, Dr. Doherty, Commissioner Murphy, the whole staff. You took a summer that we, we thought we were gonna lose. And I know as well, the other counselors are out and about. You made it safe. We paid attention to what Ruth was telling us to do and we got it in. Maybe not like all the other summers, but we got it in and Quincy did, as Counselor Kane said, Quincy did do an unbelievable job across the city, making sure the kids were safe, making sure they were active. We had a great summer, too, to go along with, so weather-wise, so it was good to, to keep them out and keep them moving. So thanks, Michelle. Ward One thanks you. I know that. And I know you live down there, so they'd be tough on you if you, if you didn't do the right thing. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. You're right. The break looked good this summer.
Thanks, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Phelan?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Just, Michelle, great job. I, but I think it wasn't just the summer. They're great during the summer because I, I'm seven doors down from Beach Red Bull Playground. Full every day, which is loaded with kids. But I, I commend you on what you did in early spring. I think I was a regular caller when we had some stuff going on down at Marymount Park, down at Elm Street Field. There was a lot going on and working with, with yourself and, and Dave Murphy, we had a, we had a couple of things that had to happen. But I think having the extra supervision by the, by the rec leaders at the playgrounds in that time, which where they go, I think was very helpful in keeping people spread apart, keeping social distance, putting in those washes, where, like you said, that was a tremendous job. And those, I just saw him filling it up the other day over at the Beach Red Bull Playground. He's still got it going. Because we still got great weather and was still a lot of kids out using the playground equipment. So I think, you know, kudos to you and your staff. I think it, hopefully, we'll go through this and eventually there'll be a vaccine and we won't be doing all this. Noel, Ruth is gonna give us a little update later, but right now, the work that's been done, great job. I hate to say it, but you gotta keep it going. Because there's no, there's no choice until we, until we beat this virus. And I think the best way is what you did by putting hand washing, keeping people separated. If you're outside, wear a mask. If you're outside, wear a mask. I think they did a great job. I saw somebody, rec leaders taking on and off, but they kept their mask on almost the whole time. So I congratulate you and your staff and the training that they were given to to slide through. And I know that people who are very grateful, whether it's Beachwood Knoll, whether it's Marymount Park, Massfield School, the old Massfield School. I drove around to them all and took a look at them all and it was a great attendance and the rec leaders did a tremendous job. So thank you and and you're one of the COVID heroes. Thank you.
Jack, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very well said, Council Phelan. Council Pamucci?
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. I thought when you were telling that story about Noel being excited and then Disney World, I thought you were going to say you started Noel the bonus sign in Disney World. You you certainly had a tough task this summer and you really rose to the challenge you and your department and we appreciate that so much. Getting outside is so important for collectively our mental health and getting the kids outside is so important for their parents' mental health. So I just wanted to say, great job. You did a good job keeping people safe. Thank you for that and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Council Pamucci. I appreciate your kind words.
Thank you, Council Pamucci. Michelle, I just obviously echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues and, you know, it's really impressive, the work that you do. It's not just the kids who you have coming in and volunteering and teaching them, you know, good work ethic and skills, but also, you know, all of the families and really the community, you know, the asset that you create for all of us is irreplaceable. So thank you so much. I'm so glad Council Mahoney gave us the opportunity to honor you with this COVID-19 honoring that we're doing here at the council. And yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. As I said, it's you're you're saying my name, but it's really, there are 214 of us and and all the other support staff and the higher ranking levels of the city that I mentioned without without the support of you, the council with budget and the CARES Act money from the governor and the mayor's support, we couldn't we couldn't do what we do.
Absolutely. Well, it's a very impressive team and very impressive hands. So thanks, Michelle. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good night. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number one, 2020, an appropriation for $5 million for the purchase of Zero Harriet Ave and 797 Quincy Shore Drive for open space.
Motion to move that into finance?
Okay, we have a motion to move into finance by Council McCarthy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Kane. I just want to take a moment. I know this is going into Finance Committee, but I want to allow the opportunity for either Council Kane or Council Phelan to make any remarks or throw out any questions that they might have, since these are two items related to their specific courts. So again, either to Council Kane or Council Phelan.
I'm happy to go first. Thank you, Madam President. This is a is an effort that has come full circle with the support of my colleagues and the city council. We proposed that these two parcels, Zero Harriet Ave and 797 Quincy Shore Drive, be acquired. And this is to be used with Community Preservation Fund money. And the purpose of acquiring these properties is to keep them as public space. These are both very much community driven initiatives and I'm sure Counselor Phelan will elaborate on his portion, but the Zero Harriet Ave portion, which was slated for development, it was currently owned by a private party that was interested in developing that into residential apartment units and with much consideration from the neighborhood that we're very vocal about opposition for this development and maintaining the parcel as is in its in its current natural preservation. We we moved this forward with the support of the mayor to the Community Preservation Fund. And I'm excited to have some debate about this as we move it into finance and I look forward to having the support that my colleagues showed at the beginning of this suggestion. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Kane. Council Phelan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to, I'm going to weigh in. I think they're both great projects. I think there's no question. Both need to be slated for open space and I think it's great. But I'm going to speak on Quincy Shore Drive parcel. Everyone knows it as the former Beachcomber. It was slated for development and it's in an environmentally sensitive area with lots of problems with a large history of flooding. The city is right now spending millions of dollars to replace the pump house down on the strand, which is right directly behind it. And to try to put any anything in there, try to bang the parking lot over, would just make the whole flooding area a nightmare. The best thing that the best use for this land right now would be to be returned in its natural state. And the money in there helps demolish the old Beachcomber, which is in is becoming more dilapidated every day and leveling off the land and cleaning it up. And this is from the Community Preservation Fund. It was in the air, it was spoke at the last meeting, Community Preservation Fund. There's close to over 50 people from the neighborhood who sent you the letters to spoke, both on Quincy Shore Drive and also on Harriet, Zero Harriet Ave. So I think we have a great opportunity to take these pieces, which are environmentally sensitive, and make turn them into open space and something that can be used by the neighborhood and used by everyone in there. I mentioned that Walston Beach is used by pretty much everyone in the city. And I think this is this is an area where when you have a chance to get open land, you're not going to have much of a chance to do that. And now we preserve this land and put it into a passive park where people could enjoy the views of the beach, the views of Boston and all that. And it returns it to the public domain, which I think is where it belongs. So I know I look forward to the debate when we have the finance chairman, when we have the when the finance chairman schedules, Council McCarthy schedules the thing and we can go into more, but there's anyone can read the packet. There is a lot of public support for for returning this area to open space. So I thank you, Madam President, and I look forward to the finance.
Excellent. Thank you, Council Phelan. So we have a motion to move this into Finance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so I'll move that into FinCom and Council McCarthy, I'm sure that we'll get something scheduled on the books and let folks know when that is. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Step two, 2020-138, the resolve on a 2020 update of COVID-19.
Thank you so much. And so I know we have Ruth here from the Health Department to do your presentation, but before we jump into that as well, I just want to recognize both Council Mahoney and Council Pamucci, who brought this resolve forward. And I think that the timing of this could not be better, just with what we're seeing across the state and across the nation with the increase of COVID cases. I'm just grateful to my colleagues for bringing this up. And so before we dive into the presentation, Council Mahoney or Council Pamucci, do you have anything that you wanted to say before we started?
No, just thank you very much for for having us on the agenda this evening and thank you for Ruth for being here to do the presentation. I do think it's timely as we're, it's cold today, not that it's beautiful outside, but it's getting into the colder months. So I I'm just, I I look forward to the presentation, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Mahoney. Council Pamucci, did you have anything?
No, I have nothing to say. Take note, Counselor Kane, nothing to say.
This is a moment in history. We should just remember this. With that, Ruth, thank you so much for being here tonight. I wanted to start by saying thank you. I think all of my colleagues and I cannot express our gratitude enough for everything that you've done. And so I appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight to provide this update. And I believe, Chris, you're going to be doing a share screen, correct? So we'll see something on our screens. Perfect. Thank you.
That's correct. Yep. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight to update the council on COVID-19. And just to start out, I'd like to talk a little bit about where we're at today. So from the beginning, which was around the beginning of January, we are at a total of 1,820 cases. We have 1,558 cases that have recovered. And these are people that have gone through their isolation and have recovered and and have gone back to daily life after experiencing COVID. We have 59 cases total that were referred out. And referred cases are cases that we would get in the beginning, start to do our investigation and our contact tracing, and then in the midst of that, find out that they most likely lived in another city or town. And so that case would be referred out to that other city or town through their health department. We've had a total of 135 deaths. We have not had a death, and I'm happy to say this, in months in Quincy. Right now, today, we have 68 active cases. Active cases are the cases that are currently on isolation. And the confirmed cases today are 11. And as we talk a little bit further, you'll see confirmed cases are what we use to do our average and coincide with the metrics from the state. So if Chris can put the first slide up, this particular chart shows the two week daily case average and it's per 100,000 people according to the state's metric system. The chart shows this data from the time that the state started using this type of metric in August and it's through today. And the state average of daily cases in its most recent report is 8.7 compared to Quincy's, which is was 6.8, actually, as of today, down a little bit from 6.8. The the next slide that we have shows an age range. The average age of cases from March to September 1st was 51. And then it was compared to the average age since September is 36. And in the beginning of COVID, we saw a lot of people that were older and in nursing homes that were the high risk group in most of our cases. Most of the deaths were attributed to the cases in nursing homes. We have seen a shift in the types of cases and the ages of cases that we're getting. When we go on to the next slide, I just want to say, prior to going into the specifics here, it's it's important to note that this data is not complete. We get our information from the State Department of Public Health through our electronic Maven system. And it's it's a good snapshot of what we see, but it's not precise because there's a lot of cases where race is not reported from the state. So when we look at this, we show that 62% of our cases are white, 17% are Asian American, 10% or actually, it's 11% are African American, and then another 10% that is on the in the other category. This includes a small number of Native Americans, as well as a modest number of cases in our Brazilian community. We we found we had a, just in in dealing with COVID, we have found that we've had a much higher Brazilian community than we originally had anticipated. And there's a small number of Islamic community in that other category, too. The next, the next chart we have shows a two week running tally of total tests administered to Quincy residents. So the data starts with from the state, from when the state began providing this data in its weekly report, and that was right around July 15. And it shows a tally of the total tests that were administered to the residents. It shows a 360% increase in testing since the state started providing this data in July. And then the next chart that we have for you shows a 14 day positivity rate, as included in the state's weekly report that we that we utilize. The data starts from when the state began providing its weekly report early in July, right around July 8. The positivity rate we know is increasing, but it's still below the peak. You can see the peak was in August at 3.25 and it's a little lower than a couple of the different upticks that we had had during the summer. So we are still better off than we were when we were having the original surge, obviously, of cases. The other things that we use when we talk about COVID numbers, and so important now that school is back in session. I've been working with the the QPS Task Force prior to schools opening, working on their opening plans. And there's a metric system that we developed separately for the school system. The metric system takes into consideration some of the things that we just talked about. We talk about the, we keep track of the number of active cases every day. We keep number, the number of confirmed cases on a daily daily total and then average those at the end of a two week period. We also track in this metric system, the number of positive cases 18 years old and under to see what amount of cases are attributed to the school age population. We track the number of positive student cases in Quincy Public Schools and what school those cases are in. We also track the number of positive cases with household contacts in Quincy Public Schools and what school they're in. So mom or dad or grandma, that is a positive case that may have kids in the house that go to Quincy Public Schools. And then we also track the positive number, the number of positive cases of QPS staff and the school name that that staff person has been in. And just to give you a little bit of information on that, for the week of the two week period of 9/23 to 10/6, we had a total amount of positive students, 11. Seven of those were remote, two were hybrid and two were in person. Prior, excuse me, from the week of 9/30 to 10/13, we had total amount of positive students, 13. Remote were eight, two were hybrid and three were in person. And though I'm not finished doing this week's, this two week metric that will end tomorrow, it looks like we're down on all those numbers as far as the amount of students. We still do have some positive students. We have only one positive staff and our numbers look to be a little bit better as far as the amount of cases in the school system. So we don't, at this point, which is really a good thing, we don't see any transmission within the school systems, within classrooms, within schools, in any of these cases that we've seen positive, positive students or positive staff. One of the things we look at with the State Department of Public Health and the metrics is not only how many cases you might have in a classroom, but how how that transmission happened. And what we're seeing so far is we're seeing transmission that happened outside in the community, not in the school setting. If there is transmission in the school setting, the state has a mobile testing unit that the school department and the Department of Public Health can utilize. And we can bring that testing unit in to test asymptomatic people in a classroom, in a school, if if need be. It's a certain percentage that that the state looks for and they definitely would do it only if there was in school transmission. So I'm happy to say that even though we are seeing an uptick in numbers like everyone else's, we are still in the yellow. We we are one of the few cities that are still in the yellow. Braintree is also in the yellow. Weymouth has gone to red. A number of other cities have gone to red. We are looking at this this data closely every day, looking at the uptick in cases, watching the numbers in in the schools, watching school sports, all those things. And these are the things that we're taking into consideration to hopefully make our decisions as we go along with COVID.
Ruth, thank you so much. I know my colleagues have questions for you, but before I turn it over, just a quick question on the the zones that we're in. I Chris sends this information to us daily, so I apologize for forgetting, but can you just remind us, what are the numbers of daily average cases to be in the different zones?
Sure. So to be in green, it's less than four cases. Yellow is four to eight cases and anything over eight cases, I mean, yeah, anything over eight cases, I'm sorry, brings us into the red zone.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for questions. Council McCarthy, you're up first.
Thank you, Madam President. Hi, Ruth, how you doing?
Very good, Dave. How are you?
Good. And as always, great job. You've earned your your paycheck.
Thank you.
This year. I want to make sure I got some of the terminology correct. I've watched the school committee numerous times. I've watched the school committee numerous times when you've gone in there. And I want to just make sure, when you say that there are, I think you just said sixty eight active cases, that means that sixty eight Quincy people are on your list that tested positive within the last week, too?
So when we get a positive case, they have to isolate for ten days. So you can say probably within the last two weeks, say, that's the amount of active cases that we have currently that are COVID positive, that are in isolation.
I should know that. So out of the sixty eight, do you check to see how many get hospitalized? Or are these just sixty eight that you go back? I mean, like, right now, out of the sixty eight, are there just people with flu-like symptoms, but nobody hospitalized, or is there some percentage?
Right now, yeah, I have a running tally on every patient as we go along. And right now, we don't have anybody of the sixty eight that are hospitalized. They're all various ages. We do have, we don't have, well, there's various symptoms. We have a lot of the younger people who are asymptomatic, who really don't develop any symptoms at all. We have some people that have the 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 regular symptoms that you would think of COVID. Sore throat, a cough, difficulty breathing. We're not seeing the symptoms as severe in most people as we did originally in the first surge of COVID nineteen. Because partly, I think, because the age is different.
Yeah, one thing I I, you know, that was on there, I mean, everything looked like, and I know it's a different virus, but a lot of flu symptoms, except for that, the taste, taste and smell.
Right.
So I don't know if that's one of the things you're not seeing now.
No, we're still seeing that, we're still seeing that. Yeah, that's a pretty telltale sign of COVID nineteen.
Right.
In the beginning, nobody knew about that, and people were saying, geez, it's funny, I can't taste my food. And then as time went on, in the beginning of the the pandemic, we were seeing more and more of that, and it became one of the primary symptoms that we see with that. We see that, we see a lot of sore throats. Sometimes we just see sinus symptoms, which is, in a lot of people, it's difficult to ascertain that you have COVID because of all the allergies that are around with change of seasons. So we're seeing the same, the same types of symptoms. But I think in the younger population, we're not seeing as many that have shortness of breath and severe difficulty breathing.
Right, and and the other thing, you reeled off some numbers about remote, hybrid, and in in person. And you got more remote right now. Of course, I know that we're being very careful on the amount of kids we have in school, but the the remote numbers were higher, I think, right?
The remote, the remote numbers were higher. And just keep in mind that the second phase of students going back didn't happen until October, I believe it was the fifteenth, that the that the four through four through twelve came back hybrid. So those first groups of numbers, the eleven students and the thirteen numbers, were primarily numbers that were related to pre K through three, hybrid or remote, and four through twelve at that time were all were all remote. So four through twelve hybrid just came back. The next couple of weeks will give us more information on now that we've added more kids into the buildings with the hybrid program because of four through four through twelve. We're we're really looking closely at those numbers to see if we have a huge increase in the amount of of cases. Right now, but it's really early. Right now, we don't see that, but I'd say in another couple of weeks, we'll have more information on that.
Okay, Ruth, great job, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Okay, I wanted to open it up to any other colleagues who might have questions for Ruth. Okay, Counsel DeBona, and then we'll go to Counsel Mahoney.
Just, thank you, Madam President, just a quick comment. Ruth, you're doing a great job, great information. I see that when we were dealing with the protocol about the supermarkets and people wearing a mask walking in, everybody knows now that if you want to go to the supermarket, you better put a mask on. So I think you did a great job when that was hot and heavy, or people were debating. Just a little bit about the children. I know when this, and I I don't want to compare and contrast it with the Spanish flu, but I know when the Spanish flu originated, and I think it was nineteen eighteen, the first wave was, it came after the kids, the children. And then the second wave that came in later, I think it was right around this time in nineteen eighteen, it actually attacked the seniors, the the elderly. We were in a situation where, especially in Quincy, our elderly got hit very hard. And most of our deaths of one hundred and thirty five people, I would probably say a lot of them were other elements or older. Do you see, now that you're, we're getting a little bit more cases of children, and I'm not saying it's going to flip flop, but we weren't hearing a lot of cases of children. Now we're all of a sudden getting some. Is it because we're testing more? Is it because the children are back in school and it's and they're more, they're going to get more confined to to an area? What are your honest opinion slash special specialty on that? Thank you.
I think, and thank you for your for your kind words. I just want to also kind of mirror Michelle Hanley. It it takes a village to do this, and I have a great team in the Health Department that really step up to the plate every day. And we couldn't do this without that entire team. But I think all of what you said is probably probably true. I think part of the reason we're not seeing a lot of a lot of elderly right now is because we've learned so much in the beginning of this pandemic. We we saw a lot of cases in nursing homes, and the nursing homes have learned a lot about disinfection and and sanitation and and the guidelines of letting people in and testing. So I think that's part of why we don't see a lot in the age range that we saw originally. Nursing homes have gotten gotten to be much stricter with who they let in, who the visiting guidelines and and the the disinfecting guidelines. I think part of why we see more kids is, yes, kids are out more. I think, you know, obviously, you bring kids, more people into an enclosed environment, you expect to see an uptick in cases. And hopefully, that uptick isn't huge, and that's what we're watching. I think also what we've seen, unfortunately, and it's not just us, I think it's throughout the country, we've seen people that are tired of doing this and have let their guard down. When our cases went down to two or three cases a day, and we weren't getting a lot of numbers with our averages, and we were in the green, I think people got to be very comfortable and let their guard down. And I think we see now more community spread where people aren't wearing masks. People are getting together with gatherings, the holidays. We we would always see a spike after the holidays. We're concerned about holidays coming up with Thanksgiving and Christmas and people getting together and what kind of spike in cases that's going to be. Also concerned that it's getting colder, we're inside more. All those things may change the numbers. But I think I think we're seeing a lot of community spread that mom and dad may have it, grandma and grandpa may have it, the kids get it. We're seeing clusters of cases in households where four, five, six people in one household test positive all at the same time. And so I think it's it's a combination of things. I think this is not the time for people to let their guard down, but I think people are tired of wearing masks, they're tired of being so careful. And I and I understand it, but it's probably the most important time to to keep those guidelines going and keep doing what we're doing. We know they work, we know masks work, we know social distancing works, we know washing our hands work. And those are the things that we have to really educate people on a daily basis in the community, in our schools, to make sure that people are following the guidelines. I see a lot of kids, unfortunately, out in groups of kids sometimes playing or kids having sleepovers. And I think it's, I think we just have to keep educating parents to do the right thing and do the right thing by their kids so that we can keep the schools open.
Just real quick, I know, yeah, you you hit it on the head with the education part of it, and I think we're more educated now. I know that our governor Charlie Baker came out very early with the whole mask situation, and he was very highly criticized across the US. But guess what? His risk was right, because the states that are giving the uptick and and higher are the ones that got rid of the mask situation and the mandated. So we we stuck with it. And here in Quincy, I see a lot of people walking around, it's almost a way of life now. If you don't have a mask with you, you don't have it like on your chin or or in your hands or even on, it's kind of like people are kind of looking at you now. So just just real quick, our, I was going to say, our, our, oh, there was a theory out there that if you got to sixty percent of an asymptomatic or it's gone through the people, the United, you know, the world, if it's gone through sixty percent, are we at the stage where how many of, how many people throughout the world have gone through that or have have had it gone through their systems? Or whether they're asymptomatic, they've been tested that way, or they've been, they've tossed, tested positive? Where are we at percentage wise, and where do we need to be to kind of get to a point where, I guess, we're immune to it? I I guess I could say, it's a weird theory, but.
So no, it's a good question, and 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 we don't have an answer to that yet, because we don't know. We're just starting to see country, in the country, not in Quincy, but we're starting to hear about people that have been infected for a second time. We don't know what kind of immunity you get once you have COVID. We, you know, the the scientists suspect there's some type of immunity. We don't know how long it lasts, we don't think it's a long lasting immunity. We know there are different strains of this virus already. And we know that there, we're starting to see small numbers of people who have now tested positive for a second time. Again, I have not seen that here yet, I hope we don't see that. So so to to say, you know, how many people have to be infected to to get that herd immunity, that's really difficult, because we don't know what kind of immunity people have. You know, I think that once we have a safe and effective vaccine, then then we can talk a little bit more about slowly getting back to normal. But I don't see that instantly, that's not going to happen. And and I I agree with the experts on this, that I I don't think you're going to see that happen till after the first of the year or or later, where entire communities are going to be able to get the vaccine, a safe and effective vaccine.
Yeah, I know that we're still in an unknown area where we're not, we don't understand it. We don't have all the data collected and where we're going to be at. So I know you'll probably have to come in front of us again at some point, and thank you for all your hard work. I know it's it was been, how has it been lately? How how's it been, the calls and?
Yeah, we're, it's busy, it's always busy. You know, we've, we've, I think our calls have gotten better as far as complaints. We have teams that go out on weekends, my inspectors partnering up with the police department. And we have, we have teams that go out and inspect restaurants, surprise restaurant inspections and retail stores. And my inspectors go out consistently all week long and do just regular inspections to look for COVID guideline issues. We also respond to complaints. I think the complaints have gotten a little bit better in the past, probably two weeks or so, because I think people are are doing what they should be doing, hopefully. Like you say, you see people going into stores, most of them are getting used to wearing masks. People, you know, people are watching about the, the stores are being very careful with the occupancy and things like that. But we're, we're constantly enforcing it, going back and forth and enforcing it, and I think that helps.
Thank you, Ruth, for your time, I appreciate it, a lot of hard work out there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel DeBona. Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you very much, Counsel President. Hi Ruth, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you again for all your hard work. I know everybody's saying it, but it is a tough, it's a tough job, because before COVID, it was a tough job, how about that? So COVID has really changed the way we all work, the way we all think. You know, when we first, we first started talking about this way back when, we thought maybe it was going to be, you know, a sprint, you know, six weeks and we'll all be back to work. We thought that was, you know, an eternity. I remember when we were like, six weeks, hopefully, and then six weeks felt like it was going to be, it just felt horrible. And here we are, you know, six months later, and we're still here. And, you know, in the paper, they're saying, you know, businesses are saying, I just know from my organization, they've pushed it out to March, potentially June, before we'll be back, or if we'll ever be back in the office. Really, that's, that's the thing that's so interesting to me is that, you know, we have, we have a proven model now that that people can work remotely. You know, and there's a, there's a catch twenty two to that, right? You know, it's, it seems like a great thing, but you miss that interaction of of going to the office or getting a coffee. And you can go get coffee now, but I just, I'm just saying that's just the day to day. So we have all adapted to that, so really what we're in America on. And, you know, and what makes me nervous for the city, or it's not just the city, it's it's our state, it's it's everywhere, is that, you know, it's, it's hard to keep people in the same, being the same due diligence of of washing your hands, wearing your mask, you know, saying, staying safe. We get comfortable, and we had a great summer, I think, where people were able to social distance and see each other. But now it's getting cold, so how do we handle those cold months? So I appreciate the update, and I'm glad to know that Quincy's still in the yellow, and I hope we stay in the yellow. I'd like to go back to the green. So here's like, the question I have is, and and I think, you know, you, we've done a great job, and I think the restaurants and businesses, everybody's doing their part, and the restaurants are. As we go into the winter months and the colder months, how are we going to deal with that? For not so much the businesses, but how do we deal with the restaurants? And and what's the plan? I don't know if you have it, Ruth, but really, how are we preparing and helping that happen? That might be a question to Chris, because I know I was, I kind of did this as a dual, dual piece of an update from you, Ruth, and how we're doing school wise and and health wise. And it sounds like we got that under control financially, and then how we're planning to go forward. So are there any concerns that you have going forward that you'd like to share with us?
Sure, so I think, you know, I think it's a consistent concern, no matter where we look at, where there's groups of people, particularly as the cold weather and and people get more in, are more inside in restaurant situations, in in any type of facility, retail facilities. So I think that the guidelines that are out there, I I I'm happy to say that that we have not seen a lot of, we've seen some issues with cases in restaurants, and but we've not seen a lot of clusters of cases in food establishments, and that's, that's a good thing. And I think that that's something that we have to be careful with as we go in. We've had, you know, the the Licensing Board and the mayor's office and and all those involved have been amazing in setting up, you know, an easy way to for restaurants to get temporary extension of premises. And I think in this, that was a lifesaver for a lot of restaurants. And I think it's something that has proven to be actually a pretty nice thing for, you know, for Quincy. And and hopefully, that will continue on as even COVID, you know, will will go away eventually. I think it's a challenge to do it now when it's getting colder. You know, where we work with the restaurants personally, my inspectors are going out there on a on a consistent basis. Again, the teams that we have going out on on in the evening, sometimes during the week, sometimes on weekends, just making sure, particularly now that it's getting colder, making sure that these guidelines are being followed indoors, because it's so important. We have still some restrictions, a little bit more restrictive than the state on indoor entertainment right now. We feel that's really important, as 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 more people come inside. As you know, the governor increased the amount of people per table from six to ten for restaurants. And so we are going to be seeing more people inside. And and we have to make sure that the distancing is still being followed, that that masks are still being followed when people get up from the the table. So it's a, it's, again, it's a constant, it's a constant reminder and a constant education of these facilities, not only just restaurants, but for retail facilities also.
Yeah, no, and I I agree with that, and I, and listen, you know, you used to be, we used to be standing, it depends on where you go shopping, but you could be standing in line to go into the stores. And and I appreciate that, because that means that they're still doing the due diligence to make sure that happens. And the same thing with restaurants, and it's a concern of mine for the restaurants, because obviously, they've had to adapt and the the, some restaurants chose not to open, right? Because they were hoping that they could ride it, ride this out. And other ones that did had to put a, you know, an investment into what they were, how they were doing their services. And they, and they've done a great job. My concern is, obviously, My concern is obviously, um, you know, how we how we help support those businesses and get them through the winter as well, but with the caveat of making sure that we're maintaining um somehow that that marathon of staying healthy and making sure people are um following those rules. It's definitely a a tricky tricky thing. I realize that some people are saying that the, well, you you actually said it just tonight when you were talking about the people who are getting affected with the um with the virus, maybe not getting it as bad, but you know, the other the other side of that result is that it's also affecting the age demographic that it's affecting. And that potentially could be because of all the safeguards that were put into place with all the other pieces, but as we go into the winter, we don't know what's going to change there. So
Right.
I do appreciate your your presentation. I thank you for all you do. I you're you're always responsive and quick to call back and very good at helping direct people. I just ask one other question in regards to, because I think um that I think people are actually better too of of if they were exposed to somebody that may have had it, where before we didn't know what to do. Um, how many phone calls do you get with people that, I mean, I tell people to call their, just call directly to their pediatric, their pediatricians if it's a kid or um if it's an adult, to call your doctor. Usually you can get better direction as to where to go. Do you give directions for people as to where they can go get a COVID test? Um, so I know you can trace it, you can do it online, you can you can find out. Are there any places local? I think Braintree might be the closest, but.
So we have um Manit Health um has been a a huge partner for us since this began um in doing testing. Um, we also um and what we're we're looking at is we're looking at um we we give a lot of information out. There's a lot of different tests out there. And we do give information out to people about what is the best test to have. The PCR test is the gold standard of tests. Um, there's antigen tests, there's antibody tests. Um, the antigen tests, um though they may have a purpose, are not the greatest um test for um diagnosing uh COVID nineteen infection because um we've seen a lot of false negatives and false positives. So what we do um a lot with people is explain the difference between the tests and tell people they should be getting a PCR test. PCR tests are available at Manit. They're also available, um Health Express is one of the um partners that actually do a rapid PCR test. Um, which there's not a lot of places that do a rapid PCR test. Um, so that Health and uh Health Express in Braintree, um in Weymouth and Abington uh do that. Um, the convenient MDs do PCRs, um but they also do antigens. Um, a- again, we'd like to avoid the antigens if we possibly can. If people go to get an antigen test, it should be, they should be getting a PCR test at the same time because the antigen will give you a quick positive and negative, even though it's not really reliable, but then you also have the PCR that you'll get back in a couple of days. So there's plenty of spots. We're not getting a lot of calls on where do I go to get my test? Um, we do get occasional and we do get a lot of calls on what's the best test to get and to explain to people. Um, if we get a person that has a positive antigen test from the state, they they don't come in as a confirmed case, they come in as a probable case. And we always um advise them within the next couple of days after they've been tested to go get a PCR, because we've seen a lot of unreliability um in that antigen test. And just think if you get an antigen test that's negative, or excuse me, that's positive, and then you go and you um you isolate that person, you do contact tracing, you um quarantine all the contacts, and then that person turns out PCR negative. Um, and all that work you've done, all that um that worry that you've caused that person and um it can be a huge problem. It's a huge problem in our school systems when we see false negatives or false positives. So we've um been working with um Superintendent Mulvey um to actually require a PCR test for um students and teachers, and we require for city workers a PCR test um when they get tested.
I would imagine at this point, almost everybody must have had this experience in their own families. I my sister traveled out of state and her husband um had the PCR test, the rapid test, and it came back positive, and then two days later, he was tested and it came back negative. So um but during the time period that he tested positive, he had every symptom. So it's it's it does play games with you. You're it's very, it's very real. So the and the reason why I asked that was because um depending on whether or not, you know, and I was wondering too, if you got tested, if you got the, I was assuming you got the notification if somebody tested positive. Did you get the PCR ones too as well?
We get the PCR ones, um, we get PCR tests and we get antigen tests um on those people who live in Quincy. Uh, if we get the positives, um the negatives, they don't come to us, but we can look them up most of the time. Um, if um, you know, if you live in Quincy. Um, again, the PCR tests come back as a confirmed test, where the antigens come back as a probable. Because they're not um as reliable.
Yeah, just for the record, my brother-in-law does not live in Quincy.
Okay. All right.
But it was, it was, it was pretty, it it was pretty real in their world. So um, because we, for all the right reasons. Um, the if I could, um, if I could indulge and maybe ask, um, through Madam Chair, if I could ask Mr. Walker a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Um, Chris, I was just wondering, I I did ask in this, in the resolve, we did ask for like an update from the municipal municipal presentation, but maybe we could do that in the mid-year update, just to kind of understand the what was spent to date. And then the reason why I'm bringing that up is I'm just curious to know how we're handling, I know the city did a great job with um with um helping people with rent and also the hospitality area. Is there anything that we have planned if if we if we go back into a situation that's a little bit more dire in the city, or do we have plans? I mean, just just the preparation, the in case, is there anything that we're thinking about in that way?
Through you, Madam President. Yes, Counselor, I mean, we're keeping a very, very close eye on the numbers with Commissioner Jones. And if necessary, um, we can mobilize uh on our needs fairly quickly. We have nothing specific that we're sort of keeping an eye on in terms of what we may or may not do, but we believe we would have the resources to provide um provide additional resources, whatever may came, may come up uh in the coming months, whether it be um issues with our most vulnerable population again, uh issues within the business community, trying to do some different things, uh issues the city of itself, um relative to employees and conditions in our schools, those sorts of things. We're keeping a very close eye on it. We think we'll be prepared uh if necessary, if
Okay. And then with regards to, just just because I know it is a concern, um and I know that you had a, I believe you had a task force with the restaurants to be able to help them, guide them through what they were doing. I know you were making their request for having outdoor seating and stuff um much quicker, but is there anything we're working on with them for potentially the winter months? Maybe tents or is there anything? There's lots to talk to some of the other communities about how they're handling it.
Through you, Madam President, again. Um, one thing that we did do last week, uh at the mayor's request, the license board voted to uh waive all alcohol license renewal fees for twenty twenty-one. Um, that's a two thousand dollar um benefit that all the restaurants will get this year, uh because at some point, you know, uh outdoor dining is only going to go so far. Uh, we can do tents, we can do heaters, uh do as much as we can on that front, but the fact that it's going to come at a time in December, January, and February, where it doesn't matter what you have, people are still not going to want to be uh outside. So it's helping manage that at this point. Um, you know, we're providing guidance and assistance to restaurant owners now as they sort of rethink their internal setups. Uh, Ruth East's team has been terrific. ISD has been terrific. Uh, we've seen some some of the restaurants be very, very innovative in how they set up their insides, uh providing that space, providing plexiglass barriers, uh providing distances between servers and and the customers. Um, and from what I've seen, the the restaurant community is really uh taking an innovative approach and you know, part of this is we gotta, we gotta keep the faith a little bit. We have to have faith that uh the restaurant community in the city is doing all the right things, uh providing for their customers safely and that uh even during the coldest months of the year, that we'll be able to go out and enjoy a meal and have a beverage.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I guess I I just knowing that we're, it's 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 hard to believe that we're you know, we're halfway through October, we're almost into November and um recognizing that and I don't think any of us, really, in our wild streams, thought that we'd be at this point in October, still talking about this, but we are, and it does, it seems like we're in it for the long haul, but I want to make sure that we're, as we're doing it, that we're paying attention to as we said, the the vulnerable, because that's another, that's another area of concern as we move forward, but also um many of the the restaurants and small businesses that are operating because um it's it's a tough economy to be doing it in. I know a lot of people are shopping local and doing the right thing, but um I do get concerned for some of the businesses. I know we've done a great job trying to assist them, but at the same time, we're going through those winter months, although I did hear that, hopefully it's correct, that we're going to have a mild winter, which would be fantastic, because that would probably be the saving grace for us if we could do that. Um, but if we could, Chris, at the at the mid-year, the the financial mid-year update, I I'm not sure when that's going to be coming before us, but if we could add the um the the expenses of COVID to date and where we spent that, I know that that was submitted. It shouldn't be, it's 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 just really to kind of give an a an understanding of where everything is and then potentially what the next phase would be that we need to prepare for. That would be, that would be really helpful, because I I know we did a lot of a lot of great work and a lot of, and I know we put in for the reimbursement for that, but it would just be helpful to understand where where it all went to so that we could also be thinking about what we might need to go to go forward with the, to help um sustain the city and to sustain the businesses that we do have. And then also, um, I I do get concerned about with the unemployment rate, some of the renters that we do have in the city. It's just, it's, it's, it's all very concerning to me. So I just want to make sure we're staying abreast of that. But thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Councilor Mahoney. Um, does anybody else have any other questions for Ruth? Okay, seen on Ruth, I just have um a a question for you, because I like to take this opportunity as a great PSA as well for those who are tuning in. Um, I know some of the questions that I have received since the last time we had you in front of us, um you've been able to address, but it's questions, you know, where residents reach out and say, I just saw a group of people over here, they're not wearing masks, what's the rules around that? Or I saw this happening in a grocery store, you know, what's going on with that and what are the rules and regulations? So can you just quickly do like a really brief PSA to anybody who does um, you know, have any concerns when they're either out in public, at the parks, or busy in large gatherings somewhere? Um, or they see something concerning in the stores, you know, who they should reach out to to either answer those questions or um, you know, to to address it and make sure that it gets addressed?
Sure. So they can, they can call the Health Department. Um, it, our main number is six one seven three seven six, one two seven three, one two seven four. Um, our secretaries take all the complaints um at the the front desk and then disperse them out to our um to our inspectors to go out. Um, we are mandated to handle um any complaints on masks um in the retail, um in retail businesses and restaurants. Um, any of the the COVID guidelines that apply to any of the the businesses that have opened up. Um, the Health Department is the um department that's mandated to follow up on those complaints. So you can always give us a call. I know that the Police Department has helped us with um issues with crowds. Um, people are supposed to be wearing a mask when um they go into a store in a public place. And I know that, you know, we've heard, wear a mask, um if you can't, social distance. Um, the best um protection for everybody is wear a mask and social distance. Um, because it, we know that those two things are the most important things that have um kept the spread of the virus down, particularly now when we're seeing an uptick in in cases. Um, but you can always call the Health Department if it's something that we need police assistance, we'll let the police know. Um, if it's on a weekend, um, you know, I'm always around, but if it's on a weekend, you can email me, um if you can't get me by phone. Um, all the Health Department um emails are on the City of Quincy website. Um, but I I answer my emails constantly all weekend long. Um, and um if it's a crowd issue where there's um people are having a huge party, that type of thing, um you can call the Quincy Police Department and they will help us to disperse the crowd.
Excellent. Thank you so much again, Ruth, for everything that you're doing, um, and for all this information. I really do appreciate it. Stay safe.
Thank you. You too. Thank you again.
Ruth. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number three, twenty twenty dash one four seven, a resolve recognized in October as Filipino-American History Month.
Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, sorry, Councilor Devana, go ahead.
No, it's okay. Go to Madam, uh, Madam President.
Thanks. Uh, no, I'm just, I'm really excited about this resolve and I want to thank my colleagues uh for their support on this as well. Um, this is to honor something that has already been happening nationally, but taking an opportunity to do so here in Quincy is to uh, you know, formally and officially recognize October as Filipino-American History Month. Um, you know, a lot of people talk about how diverse Quincy is and they have been for, you know, quite a number of years. And I think, um, you know, to speak frankly, a lot of people say there's a huge Chinese and Vietnamese population here. But believe it or not, Quincy is home to the second largest Filipino population across the Commonwealth, second only to Boston. So across three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns here, um Quincy's home to, again, the second largest Filipino population. So it's really um an honor for me to be able to take this opportunity, you know, a- along with my colleagues, to formally recognize um all of the contributions of all of our Filipino residents, our business owners. And I do have a couple of them here today um to to say a quick few words, if that's all right with everyone, if folks will indulge me. Uh, we have Diana Kintos here. She's a Quincy resident. And I also have Phil J. Salar here. Uh, he's a member of the State of Massachusetts Asian American Commission. They've taken the opportunity this month um to really make sure that they're engaging residents in the community as well as statewide, to make sure that we are honoring this um the Filipino community. So with that, uh Diana, if you'd like to say a few words, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Diana and I have three of my four children here with me this evening. Um first of all, my my dad, he um he moved here from the Philippines back late seventies and I was born here in Quincy, Massachusetts. So Quincy has been my home and um my family is actually military family. So my kids have actually moved around quite a bit. And um we chose Quincy to be the place to live after my husband got out. And we're raising our family here. So we're back here in Quincy and Quincy's great. And it just would really mean a lot to have our Filipino heritage represented here in the city.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for your family service as well. Uh, we're really excited to have you here. Uh, Phil J., did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, sure, of course. Um, well, first and foremost, thank you Quincy City Council for hearing this proposal, especially Phil Commissioner President Liang for hearing me out. Um, the Filipino community has a special place in my heart because I am Filipino descent. Um, as similar to Ms. Kinto's story, you know, my parents also immigrated here, uh not in Quincy, but in um in Dedham in my, they got here because my dad um joined the Coast Guard. And my my mother's been a a nurse for the VA hospital for almost forty years. Um, as as Diana mentioned, you know, she is a resident of Quincy. Filipinos have lived in Quincy for a long time. Um, not particularly why they picked Quincy, um but they decided to settle here and, you know, over the years, it's as you've mentioned, you know, it's become the second largest Filipino population, you know, and when people come to Massachusetts and they ask me, like, where's the Filipino community, you know, I always say Quincy and Boston, because uh uh we just don't know why um Filipinos have decided to to make Quincy their home, but it, you know, it has a lot of history in and itself for Filipino-Americans here in Massachusetts. Uh, you know, they have a countrywide known Filipino restaurant, J and J Toro Toro, um neighboring by a Filipino-specific market, Sherapunay, which many um resident Filipino residents have across the Commonwealth have consistently come to shop to um just to get a taste of home. You know, even myself, I come there at least uh once or twice a month. Um, and then in the past, Philippine Archdiocese of Massachusetts, how, you know, they used to have a specific Filipino service um hosted at St. John's. Um, and now we have an annual picnic slash gathering um at the Marymount Park. So, you know, it's Filipino roots have been in Quincy for a really long time and you know, I, as a commissioner, I felt a responsibility to make sure um their elected official, uh their elected officials, um the the city council, you know, takes that step to recognize um how diverse their city is, particularly the Filipino community that has developed there. So without that, I I thank you all for um for taking the time to to propose this, you know. Um, Randolph has already raised their flag uh in honor of Filipino-American History Month. Worcester is doing theirs tomorrow. Uh, you know, if we can plan something, I'd love to see um Quincy City Hall with their Filipino flag um by the, before the end of October. It'd be great.
Thank you so much, Phil J. You keep saying you don't know why people have moved here. I mean, it's it's Quincy. And you and I will talk offline about that and I will get you to change your mind and your doubts. Um but to that end, Diana, again, thank you so much for being here. Phil J., you as well. I know a number of my colleagues um had wanted to make some remarks as well. Counselor Devana, we'll go to you first and then Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Madam President, for bringing this about. Thank you for allowing me to co-sponsor this with you. Um throughout my time as a as a child, uh people would say, are you Filipino? Are you Filipino? No, no, I'm Thai, but I'm close. But um my dad has actually been there, says a beautiful country. Um, so I know in two thousand nine, um, United States Congress first recognized October as the Filipino um American History Month in the United States. So I want to thank Nina for um bringing this about uh onto the City Council. Um, I know you can't make the motion, so also there's a lot of um Filipino-American servicemen and servicewomen that have a longstanding history in serving in the US Armed Forces. Uh, from the Civil War to Iraq, um to Afghanistan conflicts, including nine Filipino um uh Americans have received the Congressional Medal of Honor. And that's good to note and understand that um, you know, Filipinos have have made, uh Filipino-Americans have made a great um mark on our 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 country.
Filipino-Americans have made a great mark on our, our, our country. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Quincy City Council recognizes and celebrates this October as Filipino American History Month.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona. Thank you so much. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Phelan, thank you. And Counselor Kane, I wanted to go to you next.
Thank you, Madam President. Diana, it's nice to see you and the family. I see some people dancing, I think, on camera, which is kind of fun. And Diana's son, Ganillo, was one of the recipients of the COVID-19 writing competition that we held this past spring. So it's nice to see them. And Phil J., thanks for being here tonight. Most people, well, at least in the past, have mistaken me for being Noel DeBona and I'm not Thai. I'm not Filipino. I just have a similarly healed brown skin. But when my family, my, my family's originally from Quincy on my mother's side. And when my parents first moved to Quincy from Boston, we shared a two-family home on Savard Street with a Filipino family. So I'm very, very accustomed and familiar with the Filipino culture, which is very strong and very faithful and very devout. And a couple of years ago, I had a chance to actually visit the country, which is beautiful. So I was very happy to see this being proposed tonight and I'm very happy to take part in supporting it.
Thank you so much, Counselor Kane. Okay, so we have a motion to approve this resolve, a second by Counselor Phelan. Does anybody else want to speak before we move this to a vote? Great. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Kroll.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Any item passes? Thank you so much. Thank you so much again to my colleagues for your support around this effort. And Diana, thank you and your family again for your contributions to this community neighborhood. Phil J., thank you as always for being such a staunch advocate, not just for the API community, but specifically for the Filipino-American community as well. For all those tuning in, you know, we are formally recognizing this month as Filipino American History Month. And so I encourage you, you know, to just brush up on your history, learn about, you know, the incredible diversity and history of this culture's contributions, not just, you know, nationally, but here in Quincy as well. So thank you guys so much, Diana. Thank you to you and your family for being here. I appreciate it. Okay, so that's the last formal item on our agenda. We're going to go ahead and move to approve the previous meeting minutes. So I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Phelan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Okay, next we're going to go to communications and reports from the mayor and other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do have some communications this evening. Traffic request to refer to ordinance committee for advertising. Ward one, Counselor McCarthy, at a handicap parking at 13th Flava Road. Ward two, Counselor Kroll, at handicap parking to 25 Ritchie Road, 31 Ritchie Road, at handicap parking to 432 Washington Street. Remove handicap parking at 179 Kendrick Ave. And remove handicap loading zone parking at 28 Dale Ave. Ward three, Counselor Kane, we have a remove handicap parking on south side of South Central Terrace from South Central Ave to 25 feet north of South Central Ave. Ward four, Counselor Palmucci, we have add handicap parking to 307 Copeland Street. Remove handicap parking at 20 Penn Street. Remove handicap parking loading zone at 51 Loring Street. Add parking, add handicap parking at 65 Lerton Street. Ward five, Counselor Phelan, at handicap parking at 127 Marlboro Street. Ward six, Counselor Harris, at handicap parking loading zone at 36 Apple Street, at handicap parking at 303 Billings Street and at 109 Billings Street. Remove handicap parking at 101 Billings Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Okay, seeing none, reports of committees. Counselor Mahoney, did you have any traffics for reports of committees out of ordinance?
Sorry, I was, I was having a hard time unmuting myself. So for the traffic requests that were advertised on 10/8 in the Quincy Sun, we have a positive recommendation made by the ordinance committee. For Ward one, for Counsel McCarthy, 2020-140, add stop sign to Heron Road and Albert Trust Road. Motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCarthy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
2020-141, add stop sign to Spring Street, eastbound at Rock Island Road. Motion to approve.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCarthy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
2020-142, add no parking at Naragansett Road, southeast side, C Street, at 2150 northeast of C Street. Positive recommendation.
Okay, so we have positive recommendation and a second by Counselor McCarthy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, item passes.
Moving on to Ward three, Counselor Kane, 2020-143, add no parking on Everett, Everett Street east side to Dale Street to Granger Street. Positive recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
Moving on to Ward five, Counselor Phelan, 2020-144, add handicap parking at 235 Beach Street. Positive recommendation, sorry.
We have a positive recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Phelan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the item passes.
Moving on to Ward five, Counselor Harris, 2020-145, add all, all waste stop sign, Commander Shea Boulevard at Seaport Drive. Positive recommendation.
Okay, so we have a positive recommendation for that item. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Is that it?
Yep.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Okay, so we're going to be moving on here. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counselor Kroll?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if it's more of a communication, but I just wanted to share with the group and maybe anybody who's tuning in. Back about, might have been 12 years or so ago, there was, there was a group that had kind of banded together just to take more of an ownership inside of Faxon Park. And, you know, through time and whatever the circumstance, it just kind of slowed down. But over the last month or so, there has been a reinvigorated energy and enthusiasm with several residents and users of the park. Those folks who may not be as familiar, Faxon Park is located in the Penn Hill section of Quincy and borders both Ward four and Ward five. But, you know, its, its beauty extends way beyond its border. So this coming Saturday, the Friends of Faxon Park is, is going to be re, rejoining itself at 11 o'clock up at the Pavilion, which is Upper Faxon Park. And I believe the goal of the meeting is just to kind of figure out how people can get more involved in maintaining the natural beauty. And just as kind of a side commerce, we'll be having more of a dialogue as to, yeah, the future and the forward, no pun intended, with Faxon Park. So if you live in the district, if you use the park, we'd love to have you. Your, your input is welcome. Again, 11 o'clock, Upper Faxon Park Pavilion, and Palmucci's bringing donuts. So we'll, we'll see you all there.
Thank you so much, Counsel. I appreciate you sharing that with us. Okay, any other presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Okay, seeing none, I actually, if my colleagues will indulge me, I have to just circle back quickly to the reports of committees and go to Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Brad lost me at, he's, he lost, he had me at, he's bringing donuts. That's awesome. During reports of committees, a public hearing was held this evening. Council City meeting at 6:25. Order number 2020-139, utility grant location, national grid gas, 172 South Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Phelan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Counselor Harris, that was all, right?
That's it. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. So no, we're not done quite yet. We have just a couple more things.
Work comes early tomorrow. We got ballot, we got ballot.
No, we're almost there. Motion, orders, and resolutions. Okay, seeing none, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. You know, there's a few items that we're going to work on to schedule offline, so we'll make sure that we get that done prior to the next council meeting, which is Monday, November 9th. Believe it or not, we have four regularly scheduled council meetings left before the end of the year. And before we have a motion to adjourn, I just want to say a quick thank you to all of my colleagues and everyone in the city council office and in the mayor's office. I don't think any of us thought we'd be here come, you know, the sort of last few chunks of meetings at the end of this year. And I know it hasn't been easy trying to coordinate, seeing each other, who's raising their hands, you know, who has questions. And so I just want to thank all of you for being rock stars in all of this. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Thank you all. Have a good night.